Okay, with that, we will call the November 2nd, 2021 Volusia County Council Meeting to Order. And if you would care to stand for the invocation and then just remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will call forward Pastor Tommy Clayton of Grace Life Church, meeting at the Deltona High School.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you. I'm sweating, not because I'm nervous or because I'm sick. I was given bad directions, not by anybody here, so just wanted to clarify that. But I ran here because it is such an honor and a privilege to be able to open up the session in prayer. So thank you for this opportunity. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this new day that you've given us. It's a new month, this beautiful weather, the fresh air, just makes us grateful. We want to pause and acknowledge you. Thank you for this amazing city of Deland. Thank you for the amazing residents here. Thank you for these men and women who are serving our city, Lord. And I lift all of them up to you. No doubt, this is a new month, and it's going to bring with it new problems to solve, new complaints to receive, new issues to discuss. And they do this every single day, Lord, and they need your guidance, they need your wisdom, they need your help. And we acknowledge that today, that you are a God who helps. You come down, you hear our prayers, Lord. You want to be involved in our day-to-day activity. And you created the government, Lord, and you want us to depend on you, and I know they do. So I pray that you would come and help them today, give them the grace, wisdom, and discretion that they need, and continue to bless the city. And thank you for the freedoms you've given us. Thank you for the many men and women who have given their lives to defend it, and many who are engaged in battles we don't even know about, preserving it today. So we give you thanks for today, thanks for our city, thanks for these leaders, and give them wisdom moving forward this year. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you bring him candy? Okay, Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robbins. Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
Ms. Gertman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post. Mr. Brower.
Here. So we are, we're a short one, but we still have a quorum. So we'll move on to the public participation, and I'll just call them in order that they were received. First is Karen Delisle. If you would just come up and tell us where you're from. And you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Karen Delisle. I attend Our Lady of Lourdes Catholic Church, and I live in Ormond Beach. My church is one of the 30 congregations in Volusia County that make up the Faith Organization along with Bethune-Cookman University. I am co-chair of Faith's Affordable Housing Committee. Faith has a 20-year history of identifying community problems, researching common sense solutions, and working alongside our elected officials and community leaders to make a difference. A number of years ago, our work in mental health resulted in the creation of a substance abuse treatment program in the county jail, which saves Volusia County $2 million a year, reduces recidivism. And the investment has yielded results, not only for tax savings, but for offering a way out of addiction for countless inmates. Faith also advocated for First Step Shelter, which opened in mid-December 2019, three months before the COVID pandemic severely altered admissions and placements. Despite 20 months of COVID, 150 individuals have been safely housed after stabilization and treatment through First Step, another great investment for Volusia County. Faith is calling for another investment, which will yield Volusia County big dividends. Presently, thousands of working families and seniors in our community are paying over half their income for their monthly rent. Some are paying 60% to 80% of their monthly income. And here's a shocking and sad statistic. According to the Liaison for Homeless Students in the Volusia County School District, the number of unhoused homeless students in Volusia County has risen dramatically from 2,000 last year to 3,542 students presently. Again, a visual, if a large school bus transports 88 students, last year it would have taken 28 school buses. This year, it would take 40 large school buses. Faith is calling on the Volusia County Council to follow in the footsteps of other local governments throughout the state of Florida by creating a locally-controlled housing trust fund. Faith encourages the council to kickstart this new housing trust fund with the $2.2 million already set aside for workforce and affordable housing from the $107.3 million American Rescue Plan. Volusia County students, kindergarten through 12th grade, deserve better. My three kids, children, although they're middle-aged, my three children were educated in Volusia County schools. Both my sons have their PhDs. My daughter and her husband, parents to seven biokids, are international humanitarians by adopting and adding six boys to our family, five from Africa and one from China. Today, Volusia County's 3,542 students deserve the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Richardson?
Welcome. Thank you, Council, for letting me speak, and my name is Ian Paul Richardson. And I live, I'm coming from Deland. Let me put on a little so here. Hi, I'm local government, and I have about a budget balance. Hi, I'm state federal government, but I have a program for you that is fully funded. Wink, wink. What do you mean? Well, it's fully funded. Okay, I'll take the mandate. Psych, it's only paid for for three years. Ha ha, now you have to do it forever and perpetuity. I know, I don't know if this is a problem with you guys, but when I was in Lake County, a lot of the local governments, city and county, were complaining about unfunded mandates from both the state and federal government. And I know this is a problem for everyone, because you have to raise taxes in order to fund these unfunded mandates. And I want to put together a body possibly to look into this, maybe craft a state amendment, where if the state does do one of these mandates for programs or such for local governments, that they don't have to continue doing these particular programs after the state or federal government no longer funds it. Or if they want to fund it in perpetuity, or for as long as the local government is around, then yeah, they, you guys keep doing it. I'm looking for people who are much more knowledgeable in writing amendments or law to assist me in this, because I think this is a very big issue, especially going back when we had the recession. And now, since we're going to go properly into another recession, we'll need something like this, because people are hurting on the taxes and whatnot. And we don't need federal or state governments to, or Florida, to put mandates on you guys that you can't afford. So if anybody's willing to help me on that, either from one of you or from the audience listening here, or anyone listening to our broadcast, will help me, that'd be awesome. I'll be looking at, because I'm really passionate about our local governments and stuff like that. Another small issue I want to touch upon before I go is recently it was heard that President Biden is going to give $450,000 to illegal immigrants that were separated at the border. That's outrageous. The average American household makes just $68,703. And so $450,000 is a lot of money for that. Anyway, you guys have a good day. God bless America, and let's go Brandon.
Suzanne Shiber?
Hello, Suzanne Shiber, representing Dream Green Volusia. I want to talk about stormwater today and about water quality. It's a little-known fact by the public that Volusia County has a water plan in place. Thank you to the staff for following through over years of major changes in our county. It appears to be last updated in 2017, the best that I can tell. Every district is impacted by the water plan. I heard everyone say they want to address point-of-source pollution. Please update the plan, starting with low-impact development being required and not just recommended. Please discuss improvements to the fertilizer ban and address glyphosate being sprayed in our county. Real change comes with real commitment for real solutions. As everyone knows, the lagoon designation is now extended to the Halifax River. Here are a few of the issues that happened in the last few years. According to the Ormond Observer, Ormond Beach was fined $38,494 in 2020. The reclaimed pipe leaked to the river for two days. The gravity sewer main failed at the intersection of Clyde Morris and Granada Boulevard. The road collapsed and a large hole opened up. The city also exceeded its permit limits for fecal detection and carbonaceous biochemical oxygen from the water reclamation facility. Department of Health Protection reports showed Daytona Beach had 48,000 gallons spilled in October of 2019. Port Orange spilled 30,000 gallons in November of 2020. Holly Hills spilled 758,000 in July of 2021, and New Smyrna Beach spilled 3,800 in October of 2021. Three minutes isn't enough to cover all the wastewater spills for the last few years. Yes, some repairs were made and some sewage was recovered, thank God. It isn't long enough to address the St. John's River issues either. I'm asking for new conversation between the county and cities to take place. Development is outpacing repairs and upgrades. Please address the pipes. Again, the pipes. This seven-member council said you want to address point-of-source pollution. This is a drain labeling stencil. It's a simple idea. It is quite effective, and they're quite affordable. They come in various sizes. A 12 by 18 for about 10 is $120. They come in packs or individuals. You can buy five, 10, 15, 20, whatever. You simply put it next to the drain and you use white paint. It would be the white paint that you use down the middle of a road or in a, to line a parking lot. I'm going to turn in my notes to Carissa for the spill. I'm going to turn in my notes to Carissa for the spills that I just discussed. They can also be looked up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Woods?
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Michael Woods, here as a citizen today of Deland to let you all know about the upcoming Cystic Fibrosis Foundation's Cycle for Life. It'll be on Sunday, November fourteenth in the morning in beautiful downtown Deland. For those of you that may not know, cystic fibrosis is a genetic disease. It impacts about thirty thousand people in the U.S., about seventy thousand worldwide, and has surprising number of touchpoints in Volusia County historically and currently. I'm involved in it very, much so because my son has cystic fibrosis. The foundation is dedicated to eradicating and curing the condition. It's a genetic condition. We have treatments and therapies available for probably about eighty-five percent of our population. It's that last fifteen percent that's a real challenge. But our foundation is aggressive with its research and has radically changed the methodology for how you approach what's effectively an orphan disease because so few people are impacted. One of the things that we do is fundraisers like this ride. The ride itself has been based in West Volusia for about five or six years now. We stole it away from Lake Mary when I came onto the board. And we've been based in downtown Deland for about four years. We will be starting and finishing on Georgia Avenue. And we offer a thirty-four, a sixty-two-ish mile and a Century Hundred Mile ride for those that are really dedicated. I pretty much do the thirty-four and call it a day. But the route goes through this year amongst the three different routes, like I said, through South Deland into Lake Helen. We go up to the Naval Museum by the airport, points north around Reynolds Road over to Deleon Springs. And our Century Riders go all the way up to Pearson and Seville before coming back down. It's a really wonderful tour of West Volusia and we get a lot of compliments from our riders that like coming to our area. And as we try to grow the ride, we're trying to build it into maybe like a two-day event to encourage people to come and stay in downtown. About two weeks ago, we were at about a hundred and twenty-eight riders. And so, we anticipate to be probably around two hundred for this year. And again, pent up because last year's was virtual and everyone's ready to get on their bikes and ride again. The only other thing I would say is that with the pandemic, a lot of people got on their bikes this past year or so. And so, if you've been working, you've been training out even on a Peloton and you're looking for a ride to try out, this is a fantastic one to do on that thirty-four miles. You can do it. It's supported. There's rest stops there. And if you're looking for a challenge, this is a great group to do it with. The information is available at www.fightcf.cff.org. You can keyword Tobin's Two Wheelers if you want to ride on my team. But it's a great Sunday morning. And if you're a slow rider like me, it's a great Sunday afternoon too. But there is no real pace to be kept and it's, it's just a really fun time and a great way to see West Volusia. So, I thank you for your time. And if you ever have any questions about this, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nicholson?
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I've got a slew of things to hit you with. I stopped by the balloting on my way in and gentleman caught me and made a couple of comments. I told him I would mention them. One is he's having a problem with the methadone clinics. Apparently, they come in to the methadone clinic, they get their drugs for a couple of weeks and then they're dropped. Apparently, it's not an ongoing treatment center. So, if he is correct, I'm asking you to look into it to make sure that these people, when they get into it, have all the advantages of surviving and, and doing what they need to do. Secondly, he was at the city library in Daytona Beach and could not find a state constitution. I said, are you sure? Did you check with the staff? He said, oh, yeah. We don't have one here. So, I'm asking that all of our libraries have at least the state constitution, if not the Volusia County Council documents. All right? Third, talking about the library, you have two guards, all right? You have at least five males on duty at all times. Several years ago, there was an incident, one attack in forty years in all of our libraries. It's a waste of money to have those two guards there for five people in the library, two of which are homeless. And they're no longer homeless outside the library like they used to be. So, I'm asking you to look into it again, whether we need those guards and we need to waste that money. Redistricting, I'll talk to you about that later. The Faith Group. She mentioned the phrase unhoused. Now, unhoused doesn't mean what you're thinking it means. When I talked to Pam Woods, who was that particular person with the school board, she had mentioned, when I brought up the person's name, his mother owns Daytona National Speedway, all right, and NASCAR. And he lived at the house. He graduated from Father Lopez and he was considered unhoused. To me, if you live in a four or five million dollar home on the river, you are not in any desire or need of assistance from the city. So, these unhoused people may live with their grandparents. They may live in a motel. There are all other reasons when they use the word unhoused. Not that they don't need help, but the number is way out of proportion. So, look into it to find out exactly what the proportion is. Because I know Merrim Guyabi and I spoke about it. There's several places, especially the ones that are going to college, that need a place to stay. Third, Section Eight housing. We're having a problem with Section Eight housing. I didn't realize until I read the newspaper that people get Section Eight housing, but they don't get any assistance to get into the housing that Section Eight housing will pay for. In other words, you have to pay first, last and security. You have to pay deposits. They don't have any assistance on that. So, I'm asking you to take a look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Karaginos?
Mr. Chair Council, good morning. I'm here, my name is Jeremy Karaginos, President of Volusia County Firefighters Local Three Five Seven Four. I'm here today to acknowledge the retirement of one of our directors. Although he attempted to go unnoticed, Local Three Five Seven Four would like to acknowledge our Public Protection Director, Mr. Pozo. Your firefighters thank you for your years of dedicated service, not only as our Public Protection Director, but our former fire chief. Your impact over the years has greatly improved fire rescue's operation and has provided us with the best apparatus, the best PPE. And you continue to push us to get us back to our staffing levels that we saw prior to two thousand and nine. We hope that we can continue on your path of service excellence and increase our staffing, making Volusia County Fire Rescue the premier fire department in central Florida. Enjoy your retirement. Mr. Pozo, I would like to present this to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager, we've just had a request to call him down. Were you going to handle that later?
I was going to make some remarks during my time, but it's the council's pleasure. And we have him, that way he can't disappear.
Well, why don't we do that since he requested that we not do it? That makes it even more fun. Jeremy has already broached that. Director Pozo, would you, would you please come down?
Good morning.
Good morning. And thank you for your service. You will be missed. And I think some of the other, all of the other council members want to take a shot, I mean, want to say something. So, seriously, we, we wish you all of the good fortune you can have. We know you're, you're moving on in a way that's going to keep you busy still. And, but we, we do appreciate your service personally. I have really enjoyed working with you. You're positive. You have a bright outlook for the future. And as Jeremy said, I couldn't be more pleased in how you have helped me with one of my goals and fully staffing fire stations. So, thank you for your service. Barb Gorman?
Mr. Pozo, I would actually be offended if you would leave here and not allow us to have this moment to say thank you for all you've contributed. Right? If you could just walk away from me like that, I don't know what to say. But you, you have been very positive. You've been very resourceful when I've asked for something and you look to make a way to make it happen or explain if it can't, what can happen. Through COVID, you, you were, you were a hero through that to get the resources out to the community and to serve everybody equally and make that opportunity the best that it could be. And it just means a lot to be able to say thank you to you before you leave here and let you know how appreciated you are, were, and will be in whatever ventures you have going forward. I know they'll be successful and don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Johnson?
It's truly a sad day for Volusia County to see someone like Joe Pozo leave our staff. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Pozo as sheriff and as a county councilman. And his professionalism, his dedication to the county, his dedication to the citizens is just unmatched. I've seen it when you've had unwarranted, unnecessary, out-of-line criticism when you were doing the right thing and doing a great job. We all make mistakes. I'm not saying that, but you've always worked hard to try to make it as mistake-free as possible and do everything in your power to make sure that your mission and the county's mission and the citizens' mission was accomplished. I thank you for your years of service. We have a true professional here where we're watching you leave. But thank you for your years of service and for your friendship. And look forward to years of friendship from you. I wish you all the good luck and happiness in the future. And I, for one, will greatly miss having you at our meetings every other Tuesday. And thank you for your service, Joe. You've been a great employee, a great brand, and a great mentor to the many people that have worked under you.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Billy Wheeler?
Joe, I also would have been offended had you walked out the door and I didn't get a chance to tell you what you've personally meant to me in a representative of Volusia County. You've been innovative. You've been honorable. You've been respectful, dedicated, committed. I don't see where we could have asked for anything more than what you've brought to the table. You will create a horrendous hole in this group of people here that works with Volusia County. I thank you for your commitment. I wish you nothing but the best. You will truly be missed personally, as well as by this entire Volusia County. Thank you, thank you for your expertise and good luck in the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dana Robbins?
Director Pozo, there's not a whole lot we can, where I can say that hasn't been said already, but you're going to be missed. Just your dedication to the citizens, to the county, to staff, to me. Thank you for always, for always being there and especially picking up that phone when, when we need it, when I needed it. It means a lot. And I just hope going forward, you can work on your golf swing a little bit more and have fun and enjoy, enjoy life or enjoy your part-time retirement. But you're going to be missed and it's a shame to see you go. But if you need something, we're here. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
Did you listen to Simon and Garfunkel in the seventies and eighties?
I did, still do.
Slip out the back jack, make a new instant, it didn't work. So, Mr. County Manager and Director, well?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we are definitely losing someone who really has dedicated his life to making our Public Protection Department one of the best there is. And I, I don't think people realize how hard that job is. It is, it's nine hundred people. It is, besides the known fire EMS, emergency management. Remember, you also have the jail, animal control, beach patrol, EMS administration, the medical examiner. Such a wide area. And having spent a little time over there myself, I can say very few nights go by without something happening. It's sleepless nights, missed dinners. It's a lot of things that go into running an operation like that. On top of that, Joe actually helped us out too in HR at one point. He has a great understanding of the organization. And Joe, what I really appreciated was you would come into my office and sit down and tell me where this isn't working, where we've got to go in this direction, we have to handle this. He's not afraid to defend his position. And, and we really have, in my opinion, built one of the great organizations in the area. And I think our fire department is second to none. I think our EMS is outstanding. Does it need to evolve like everything? Yes, and we're working on that. Joe's already got that started. Our beach patrol, it's, you know, known worldwide. So, animal control, wow, what they've done just this last year alone. And again, what, what Joe did and has been doing during this COVID, he's taken the bull by the horns. He's set up places to get tested, places to get vaccinated. When others were falling apart, he was right there putting it all together and taking that on. So, I'm going to miss you. I don't think I can hang with you playing golf, but I'll try. And I hope you, I hope the golf game doesn't get too good. I hope, I know you'll be busy out there in your next endeavor, but I look forward to continuing our friendship and being able to see each other. It's a nice thing about having great people like this in our community. So, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Councilman Lowry?
Yeah, same thing. Wonderful job through some really hard times. The fire thing and all those meetings that we had way back in the day when we got things really settled. People really appreciate that. So, appreciate all you've done, man. Great job. Thank you, sir.
Director Pozo, and I don't want to make this hard on you. I want to, I want to give you the opportunity to say something if you want, but just in conclusion of what everybody else has said, I, I just want to say again, I, I couldn't appreciate more the conversations we've had, the work that you've done and brought forth to the council to staff fire stations so that these men and women could not only adequately fight fires, but go home safely at night. And EMS, there was, there's been things that on our agenda, I think we should have broken champagne to, that you have brought forward. So, thank you. If you would like to say something, please take a minute, but...
Well, I, I, I did really kind of want to go quiet for a lot of reasons. Because it's hard. It's a tough job. And we do have very good services regardless of what you read in the blogs or in the newspaper, regardless of what other opinions are in this county. We have a outstanding EMS division. And the one thing I can say to everybody is we've not had one person from the public complain about our EMS that was transported or treated by our EMS division. Not one, not one bad patient outcome. And our fire services division is outstanding. We have, together, together.
We have, together, together, and you have given us the funding and the opportunity to build what is an outstanding fleet. We've added to that fleet in different dimensions, people. And you've given, George has given me the opportunity to assess and evaluate how divisions are run and has allowed me to do it. And we've made some changes and we've got some very good people in place in all of those divisions. And so, it's hard to walk away from that. It is. That's why I didn't wanna do this today, 'cause it's difficult, 'cause it is good people. And however, you do know when it's time. You have an internal clock, and I've told my staff, all of these positions have a lifespan. They all do. And they have a lifespan because of the decisions that you have to make and because of the issues that you have to take on and the issues that you have to answer two and four. And they're not all popular. And you do have to say no, and you do have to handle those in the most appropriate way for the county. And it's really about the county. It's not about individuals, it's not about programs or people or any of that. It's about providing a service, and that's what we do. We provide a service. We provide emergency services, and the county provides other services. So, it's about that, really. So, you know, with that comes, you know, criticism, and with that comes, you know, questions. And, but I think we, together, together, as a county, as a council, as an administration, George and Suzanne, we have made the right decisions. And that shows in just our service and our service deliverables, which are second to none. I thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the last, it's probably been about thirty-eight months now in this job, and I appreciate that. You know, I've gone out on a very high note in a very good position, in a very good county, and I appreciate that tremendously. And I have no regrets on anything. And I thank you for your kind words today and for George's kind words and Suzanne's mentorship and allowing me to go to her office and tell her things that I thought people needed to hear, but I was able to tell her. And then we, from there, were able to get a good policy decision and keep things moving as they are. So, and I am gonna work on my golf, because in the last thirty-eight months, my golf handicap has gone up. I'm not gonna, you know, that's the truth, okay? Because you can't leave, you don't leave this job when you go golf, because the phone rings or you hear, you know, some new text coming in, so you have to stop and check it. During COVID, Ms. Gorman, I was golfing one day and you called, and I actually muted the phone so I could hit my next shot because there were people behind me. Okay? So, we all know that now, all right? But you had a concern that day, and it was COVID, and it was a high concern, it was about vaccinations. So, you know, things are very good in my life, and I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for letting me serve in this position. And Jeremy, you shotgunned me on this, and the plaque is very nice, so thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Joe, Joe, can we get a picture?
Hold your plaque if you don't mind. Okay. Okay, this is nice. Ready? Wait, one more time. Wait, one more now. That's good. Thanks.
I don't know if there'll be more surprises today, but we will move on to item one, the consent agenda, and just, the council probably knows, but we, the staff has requested that we remove item S on the consent agenda. Is there any other items that any council member wanted to pull for remarks or for a vote?
Move approval consent agenda.
Billy, you were gonna hit your, you didn't have one to pull. Okay. Motion by Lowery, second by Johnson, to approve the consent agenda, less item S, which will be brought back at a future meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. That takes us to item two. Which is a presentation of economic development for the third quarter, Q3.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, County Council, Cyrus Callum, Aviation and Economic Resources. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you Ms. Helga Van Ecker. I almost slipped and said Greta. She's gonna give you the presentation for the Q3, the third quarter.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to do the presentation today. It's based on the quarterly book that you've all received, and I'll be focusing primarily on three slides and kinda doing an overview on the others so that it's not too much. If we can go to the first slide. So, the quarterly report, as you know, tries to show trends that are going on within our community and things that we're seeing through economic development. COVID has really changed how we look at things this particular year, because not only are we looking year over year, but we're often looking year over year over year, because the norm was 2019. Then we had 20, where we've had the COVID impact. Now, we're starting to come out of it. And if we wanna understand where we are from an economic standpoint, we really have to kinda look back behind to see what we lost and what we've gained back, okay? So, there's a couple of slides that'll point that out. But if you look right now on the slide that's in front of you, this basically shows the population trends that we're seeing. It's based on the census. The census that was done indicates that we, the orange line is us, it shows the numbers, and it compares us to the adjoining counties so that you can see the transition of it. And we are right in line, we've got a nice smooth slope going on, so there is a good amount of growth within the county, but it's not doing anything like where it's jumping. There's no anomalies that we see there. I mean, as opposed to where you look at Orange County, it's just shooting straight up there. Okay, if I have the next slide? We've broken it down here by the municipality so that you can see. The graph is indicating the percent growth. It's not the highest number of residents or the highest number of individuals in the growth. The graph simply shows the percent. The table next to the graph shows you the difference between 2010 and 2020 with respect to actual population numbers. As you see, Deland has had quite a high percentage of growth, but the actual numbers are, the highest number within the county is in Deltona. Well, that's only a percent change of nine and change, it is the highest actual number. So, okay? And then we wanted to show you the, based on the constitutional amendment, just where the minimum wage is gonna go over the next few years, so that this is something that's gonna impact a lot of the businesses in our community, because retail, hotel tend to have the wages that are going to be in need of growing with this. So, there will be an impact there. Although, a lot of the businesses already have surpassed the 2021 minimum wage, we're at a, you know, seeing more of a 2023, so we're okay right now. Okay? So, this is one of the ones where we wanna look at where we were in 2019 versus where we are today. The chart shows, based on major industries, what the workforce numbers are in those industries within our county, or within our region. This also includes Flagler County. And then the numbers going down the side will show you the gain or the loss this quarter over the quarter of 2020. And you'll see that there's been a good amount of growth in employment when you look year over year, but on the chart next to it, we've asked that 2019 be included there. So, for example, on leisure and hospitality, we're showing 30,200, which is, it's the second line there, and it's showing a growth of 2,633, which is a large growth, and it's a good number. But if you look at 2019, that number was at 32,800. So, while we have seen a good amount of growth, we're still not where we were pre-COVID with respect to that, and that's two years. So, you'd expect to see some growth in addition to the number that was there, but we are seeing improvements, we're just not where we need to be yet there. But then, if you look under professional and business services, we're only showing a 1,200 employee increase, but compared to 2019, we've actually surpassed the number that we had in 2019. So, we've grown in that industry overall. So, there, I guess if you were to pick winners and losers by industry, that would be one of the winners. But when we get to the slide that shows our workforce, if you can remember these numbers, we'll go back to that. Then under state government, just so that you can see, the, this quarter's number is at 4,033, where in 2019, we were at 4,800. So, it's gone down considerably, even though the number that you're seeing year over year is only showing a reduction of 200. It's been a much bigger reduction overall from pre-COVID days, right? So, the reduction in staff that we're seeing is actually a greater reduction, and the improvements are actually a greater improvement, 'cause this is only showing on the chart the year over year. Does that make sense? I know it's a little confusing. I got a lot of head nods, though, so I'm gonna take it as a positive. Right? If I can have the next slide? All right. So, unemployment, this is like one of my favorite charts that we've ever done. It shows year over year unemployment trends for the county. And if you look at all those nice little lines that are pretty close to being perpendicular to each other quarter, you know, month by month, it shows the natural changes that happen with unemployment. We see seasonal changes in our community, we see, you know, unemployment going down, but it went down very steadily and almost to the point where you could expect and anticipate what the number was gonna be the next month, except for when you look at the mountain, which is COVID. So, that explains, again, why we have to go back two years when we're trying to understand the trend. Okay? Next slide. On this chart, what I really want you to take a look at are the three boxes at the bottom, because in each of those boxes, there's two columns. To the left, it shows Volusia County's available labor force. To the left of the next box, it's Florida's, and the next one is USA's. And you can see that from a number standpoint, or a gain and loss year over year, we're proportional to what the state saw, proportional to what the country saw. So, those are good signs with respect to where we were and where we are. So, we're right with the others. The same with the employed labor force. Okay, next slide. So, this chart is the one I was talking about. So, if you remember, I was saying how there have been some winners and some losers with respect to the industry growth and the employment. When you think about that and you think about what we're hearing with all the businesses having difficulty finding employees, we have never had a larger labor force than what we have right now. So, our labor force numbers have increased. Our unemployment numbers have decreased, which means there are more people employed than there were pre-COVID, but our population has increased. So, on this chart, graphically, the blue at the base shows you the increase of people employed. So, you can see our employment numbers have continuously gone up. We've got, at the end of the chart, it's where we are today. At the beginning of the chart, it's where we were January of 2020, which was right before we really saw the impact of COVID. You can see those lines, if you run your finger across, are almost at the same point. So, we're in good shape. It would indicate that we're actually kinda coming out of the COVID impact and starting to come into substantial growth. Then if you look at the beige, that's the unemployed people. So, our unemployment numbers have gone down, so as you go across the chart, that gets thinner and thinner. And then across the top, of course, is the total workforce that's available. And that is, last month, I think, was actually a little bit higher than this month, but overall, these numbers are higher than we've ever been in the past. Okay? So, those are all good signs, and it's good indicators that our employment base is keeping up with our growth. So, we're seeing positive changes in the economy overall. Okay, next slide. This is the unemployment numbers, or employment numbers per city, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, a little deep into the weeds. Next one. Keeps going to the other cities. All right. This one shows the residential permits. You can see 2021, where really construction has taken a big jump on residential. Will probably exceed, I think we have exceeded, the number of permits over last year's quarter or last year overall already, and will be probably, we're not gonna see a drop in permits. Next one. These are broken down by municipality, so you can see the number of permits as well as the value of those permits based on each city. Again, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, just so that you know it's in the book, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. This is construction building permits. What we're seeing, the large one there, I think we explained last time, under 2020 first quarter, was the Amazon permit, that's why you have that big jump there. We are seeing additional permits coming in 2021, but not as much as we've seen in the past. And the truth of the matter is, from an economic development recruitment standpoint, working with Team Volusia and the CEO Business Alliance, there are not a lot of buildings that are vacant, so we don't have a lot of inventory to promote right now. We're hoping that there's more construction going on with industrial and commercial buildings. Next one. This takes that same chart and breaks it down by municipality. These are redevelopment permits. We only show permits here that are 10,000 or more in value, 'cause we don't wanna show, like, you know, people improving their plumbing in their homes. So, there are substantial permits still going on on that front, which means we're improving existing facilities as well as building new. Okay? Again, this is broken down by city. This is, now, we're jumping into education. General education, you can see, we've had over 6,000 either associate degrees or certificates over the past year. Can we go to the next one, though? This is master's and doctorate degree completion, so we've got good numbers there. But it's the next slide that I really want you to take a look at. This is a great indicator of the types of jobs that our community is working toward. The students that are coming out, you look at engineering, science, mathematics, the STEM, that's the highest number that we've seen over this past year, and that's, you know, 1,600, all based on engineering, mathematics, aviation, and a lot of that is Embry-Riddle, obviously, but it's also with the other universities. Digital technology as well, over a thousand degrees in... Digital technology as well, over a thousand degrees in that, and then production and maintenance. So we've got a really great mix per the industry, and this is something that we like to show the businesses that are looking to grow, so that they can see that there is an employment pipeline being generated. Our education system is responding to the economy and where business growth is. Okay? Okay, so I took a liberty, and I wanted to very briefly talk about the small business program that we've been working on. I know I was only supposed to talk about the quarterly, but just to kind of give you a teaser, we did have our first Small Business Initiative Partners workshop. These are the, the attendees of the workshop. It was an amazing morning for us. If we can go to the next slide. We had, we engaged over forty-two different economic development stakeholders and team members within our community, and it was countywide. Part of what we're trying to do with the Small Business Program or the Business Retention and Expansion Program that you all focused us on is to make sure that we go countywide and we do business-wide. If you look at these, so we did a survey, and we didn't just do the survey with the contacts that I have within our department. Each of our partners, all of the chambers, the incubators, the, the private economic development entities, SBDC, all sent the survey out to their contacts as well, so that we've really got a very broad spectrum. And then we met with a lot of the stakeholders one-on-one. You know, Ms. Wheeler and I had a conversation about when her business was in and where she is today as well. And we put all of that into the data that was presented to the team of forty-two that met last month, and talked about the results that we saw. But if you look at these, the industry representation is exactly what it should be. It's a really great example of the types of industries that we have within our community. So what we've touched on versus what's here is totally in sync based on the responses we got. Same thing with the employment level of those businesses surveyed. We had businesses that were up to nine employees as the majority of the people, and those are the majority of our small businesses. But we also had businesses that were over a hundred respond to our survey and give us results, so that we could really get an understanding of what the needs are within our community, so that we know where we should be focusing our attention first. Next slide. Just so, and when we come back with a full breakdown on what this group came up with at another council meeting, because I didn't want to take up too much time, we'll go into more detail on what we can do to resolve issues. But just real quick, two main points that came out of this was that the resources that they're looking for are here. They're just not easy to find, which is something we've been saying a long time now, that we need to pull everything together under one hub, so that we all understand what we offer, and we can share with the businesses and show them how to get what they need. So it was validation of what our plans are, and before we spent too much time and too much energy in doing this, we wanted to make sure we were on the right path. And then the other chart here shows you that the most requested information and assistance has been financial, business, and then labor and regulatory have been together. And what we're gleaning from that is obviously financial is something that we need to look at, and we've had conversations about that. We have some programs that we're, we're working on to put together. Business strategy is a matter of communication and letting them know where those resources are. And then the labor force and the regulatory actually go hand-in-hand with business expansion. So the businesses that are expanding are either physically expanding or expanding with their workforce, are having difficulty on those two fronts. And it shows us that there's a need for us to spend a good amount of time and attention on that, whether it's the permitting process or finding the workforce and getting the word out. It's just a little teaser. There's great information that we're getting out of this effort, and most importantly, we've got all of our partners engaged, and we're, we're each learning from each other as we go through the program. Our next group meeting with them is November thirtieth, and at that point, we're going to take the information that we've analyzed and we've worked through and actually come up with, I'm hoping, three recommendations that we can come back to the council. It's going to be an ongoing effort. Consider it a living, breathing document as opposed to a strategy. And my hope is that every quarter or so, we have three new initiatives that we can put before you, till we find exactly what we need, and we'll be able to show you what those three prior initiatives have done, and look at see whether they work or not, and if they're not working, make modifications to fix them. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Councilwoman Gertman.
Thank you, Chair, and, and thank you, Helga, for great information and just a great overview of the current status. We were on a call yesterday, and we were talking about youth employment and initiatives that we're on committee for Career Source. And it's come before, this council before, where we've talked about the customized program that Career Source helped implement, and we talked yesterday about the need for resources. Do you see that falling under, you said, three initiatives rolling out or, or looking at that? Do you see that as a potential for coming under that umbrella?
Absolutely. I mean, the, the Yeti Program is what you're referring to. It's the Youth Employment Training Initiative. And the program that was actually put in place kind of as a pilot, because it was just Career Source dollars in it, and it was very successful this past year. We've had great results from it, and probably should have Robin King come and talk to us about it at one point. But yes, that's the kind of thing. My hope is that we take the top three issues every quarter, and we come up with three programs or three initiatives that we can put in place to respond to each. I think the Yeti Program is a great one, and should be included in that to some extent. We have to figure out where dollars are and to what extent we can push it. That's the, the next step.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and I also want to say thanks, because my understanding is we did get additional funding for a downtown Deland initiative, a training initiative for diversity inclusion in regards to local business. So thank you for your efforts in supporting that also.
And that's a great program, too, because not only is the county contributing into that, but the city of Deland has also agreed to contribute to that. So it's a joint effort, and anytime we can work with one of the municipalities, it's always a plus.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, thank you very much.
Helga and Cyrus, I'll just say that you, you make a tremendous team. We thank you. It's, it's a privilege to live in the free state of Florida, leading the country, and I think Volusia County is moving in the right direction. Thank you for your work. And can I get a motion to approve their report? Motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Lowry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries six to zero. That takes us to item three, and Donna Butler for the presentation on the Florida Department of Health contract.
Your Chair, Members of Council, Donna Butler, Community Services Director. So today before you is the annual renewal of the core contract, which is a, a three-way relationship between the county of Volusia, the local health department, and the state health department, and we bring it in front of council every year. So just to give you a little background, the state provides for three specific areas: environmental health, communicable, communicable disease control services, and primary care services. On the other hand, the county is responsible by statute for providing facilities and ensuring adequate fire and casualty insurance. I don't know what that part is. For those facilities, I think it's supposed to be for those facilities. Vehicles, and then various operational expenses. This year's annual contribution is two-point-eight million dollars. One-point-nine of that is made in direct payments to the health department each month. It's split up over the twelve months. Then there are various operational expenses that we pay directly on behalf of the health department. And then finally, we have an in-kind value, market value for rent not charged in our New Smyrna Beach location where we own the facility. And that is my presentation, if you have any questions.
Councilwoman Lowry.
I move approval for the core contract for the Department of Health.
Motion to approve by Lowry, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Barb Gertman.
I know they are going through some transitional change. The director is retiring, and I'm really interested in how we can, I guess, help take it to the next level for Volusia. And I just think there are some additional opportunities regarding health, regarding being more community-centric, and getting more out of the health department, more in a partnership. Right? So I would like to see how we can, how we can do that better and be more collaborative, because especially through early days of COVID, and I know some of that may have come from a state level, but I just see how other departments of health appear to have worked more collaboratively on the community level. So I would just like to know how we can do that better, and if I can be a part of that or need to be. I'm open.
Sounds good. Thank you. Ethan here is already joining our team of community services directors and meeting with us regularly, going through leadership training together with us, so we're excited to work with Ethan. He's already leading a couple initiatives within the community, and maybe sometime soon, we can come back with an update.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other requests or questions, so we'll call for the vote to approve the contract for two million eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Motion was made by Lowry, seconded by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to item four, update on the revenue loss projections. Ryan.
Good morning, Chair and Council. Ryan Osowski, Chief Financial Officer. Today, I have before you an update on the revenue loss projections for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, which are commonly referred to as the ARPA funds. However, ARPA is the broader bill that contained the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. The update here on our revenue loss projections does not affect the amount of the grant. Everything that we're going to talk about here today just reflects the ability and the categories that we're allowed to spend. Revenue loss was one of the categories that you were allowed to spend for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, but there were other categories. There was COVID-nineteen responses, there was premium pay, and then there was the water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. As a reminder, our total grant amount was one-hundred-and-seven-million-four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-one. We first met on the, or I first came to council on the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund in June, on the June twenty-second meeting, where we did a presentation of the four categories of funds and the regulations that had just been released by the Treasury, and what they said about how we could spend the funds. On July twentieth, a budget amendment was approved to recognize the one-hundred-and-seven million dollars of funds and the projects that would be directly funded, so that we could use that to report on the first annual recovery plan that is available on our website that included the directly funded projects of thirty million one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, along with the estimated revenue loss at that time of seventy-seven million. Council held a workshop on July twenty-seventh to talk about the projects, and then through a couple meetings in August, there were some clarifications where I brought the list back and just sought guidance, but no major changes were done at that time. On June twenty-second, one of the slides in that presentation was this slide right here. Projecting revenue loss is an art and a science. The, there's many factors that go into it. It's actually not a calculation that is complete right now by any means. The previous revenue loss projection was a four-year calculation for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-three. So the amounts that were previously presented for revenue loss, the majority of it was actually a projection into the future about if our revenue streams continued on the trend that they're continuing, that they were on at the time, what would our revenue loss be potentially for this program? The factors that are listed on here that I identified at the time as potentially changing things would be investment income, although right now, there's been no major moves for the Fed. The return that we have on the portfolio hasn't really been affected. State and local grant activity, that was my second bullet back in June twenty-second, and that one actually does come into play with our projections. Recently, the governor announced a lot of funding for water quality projects. Our southwest and southeast water reclamation facilities were announced to have fifteen million dollars worth of grants, which were going to be applied for. They were always something that we were going to need. If you recall, the directly funded projects included twenty-five million for those same facilities, and we expected to be able to apply and receive those grants. We did not initially expect to receive them as fast as we are, so now they actually come into the revenue loss calculation. All revenue of the county, regardless of fund, is subject to this calculation. There are some things that are excluded, but just as a reminder, the, the revenue loss calculation is everything the county does added together, whether there's a restriction on it or not. Tourism taxes included, grants that are restricted for a particular purpose that come from the state, those are included. Obviously, our own source revenues, like property taxes, are included in the revenue loss calculation. No major updates were done for property tax rates. There's no new information I have to change anything from those projections. However, the next bullet, impact fees and permit revenue, since the projection based off of May's numbers, the summer has been very, very strong for impact fees and proportionate fair share agreements, and growth, as we all know, has, has been strong. Tourism tax collections have also come in very, very strong. The last four months of them were fifty percent. News Journals had their articles on about how it's historic levels, fifty percent above two thousand and nineteen's levels. Both impact fees, permit revenue, and tourism tax collections, I'll go back one more time, just like the grants, because this is an entity-wide calculation, our revenue loss is affected by these restricted resource streams. So while I'm adjusting the amount that we expect for revenue loss, the increased revenue streams that, that are affecting that are all in restricted categories, and that's important to, to recognize. However, unfortunately, the, the federal government doesn't allow you to do just a general fund revenue loss calculation. It's all of it together. The other items there, airport, ocean center, and parking garage activity levels, there were some minor adjustments for that, but nothing to the impact of the tourism taxes or the state and local grant activity. So the update of revenue loss amounts, the latest revenue trends, I previously, on the previous slide, I talked about how we're looking at higher revenues than originally projected. There's another factor that comes into play. I previously presented everything as we had it on a fiscal year basis. We do our budget on a fiscal year basis. We do our annual financial report, the actuals, on a fiscal year basis. In the June twenty-second meeting, I had mentioned that we were, I was writing a letter to the Treasury during their sixty-day comment period on these funds to express how that is burdensome on local governments. It's not only burdensome, though, it actually affects the calculation, because when you have a different period of time, then you have different months that are included in that calculation, and it brings revenues from a later period of time versus a current period of time. Our base year is on a fiscal year, but these calculation years are on a calendar year, and it pulls revenues forward. It's the easiest way to explain it. It pulls revenues forward when you do that conversion. So that actually also impacted the revenue loss calculation. Treasury requires, like I said before, individual annual calculations each year stands alone. The, the big grants that we got for, that we will be getting for The big grants that we got for, that we will be getting for the water projects, currently I have those projected in calendar year 23. That would be when the work would be actually being done so that the grant would be reimbursable. It's possible that they would be in '22 as well. Just one of the many things that goes into trying to do this projection. But if they all did come in in '23, and that's $15 million of extra grant revenues, that's on top of the tourism tax and the permit fees and any other adjustments that the latest revenue trends have indicated, that year no longer shows, would no longer show a revenue loss. It would show what would be referred to as a revenue gain because of those restricted revenue sources. The Treasury does not count those years against you. If you have a year where you don't have a revenue loss, you get to ignore those years. So the first year's calculation still is in play. We've already finalized, and it's in our report that we published to the website about the fiscal, sorry, the calendar year '22, had 11.976, or approximately $12 million of revenue loss. However, at this time, due to the fiscal year conversion and due to our latest revenue trends, the expected annual amounts of about $20 million of revenue loss per year for the three years after that no longer look like they're going to happen. So we just have the calendar year 2020's number at this point. I'd like to point out that without those revenue loss numbers, those approximately, if you just took the 80 million and divided it among four years for simplicity's sake, that's 20 million per year that was, that was in play. If you compare that to our actual revenues that are included in this calculation, which are all funds, restricted and non-restricted, it's about a 2.8% change. So if you look at just 80 million versus the 12 million, it seems like a big number, but we're talking about four entire years of an organization that has $620 million in our calculation as far as what our base revenue is. So on a percentage basis, when you have things like 16, or $15 million of water grants that come in, or you have the tourism tax go up, it affects the projection of these Again, I want to summarize by saying, there is no change in the grant. We have $107 million, 107.468. It just impacts the category. So instead of the revenue loss category, which would have allowed us to spend it on more flexible projects, we will have to revisit the other categories. The COVID-19 responses, the water sewer projects, broadband, it's not something that's on the list right now, but it's an eligible expenditure. I also want to cover that there are some potential for regulatory changes. I mentioned that I wrote that letter to the Treasury regarding, and that was actually attached to the June 22nd agenda item, if anybody wants to see that out there online, regarding the fiscal year conversion. There was over, close to 1,000 comments the Treasury received on regulations.gov, which is where they collect these public comments on their rules. Just searching for the term fiscal year, 250 of those comments were related to this conversion. In the National Government Finance Officers Association meetings that we've been having about these funds, they've indicated that the Treasury is receptive, although they've made no commitments to change anything on the concerns that governments have over this conversion. So it is possible that the Treasury could allow a fiscal year calculation instead of a calendar year calculation. If they did that, our potential revenue loss goes from 12 million to 34 million. And that's just based off of FY '20 and FY '21. As you know, FY '21 concluded September 30th. We are going through the year-end accrual process now. A perfect example of that would be state shared revenues. The state collects them, they remit them to us months later, but we still record them in the fiscal year that they're related to. We don't have everything on the books yet, but we have the majority of it, the majority of it on the books, and the range of possibilities is much smaller when you're only dealing with a couple accruals. So that 34 million is mostly set at this point. So there is a potential that the Treasury would still come back and listen to the 250 governments that wrote in online, and however many wrote in by mail, and change the rules to allow that. There's also potential legislative changes. There is an act pending that was passed last week, my, maybe two weeks ago now. My timing might be off, but I think it was, anyway. The Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Flexibility Act, that allows your, for your funds up to 30% to be spent on infrastructure projects that they've identified in certain categories, roads basically, and CDBG eligible projects. There's also transit that would be eligible for that. But all of these categories that I just mentioned, if they expanded and they allowed 30% of your funds, they have an explicit requirement that that category is tied to supplemental funding only. So if it's in your budget already, like Botran is, we wouldn't be able to use it on transit unless we were going to expand the system. So really, we're probably looking at roads and CDBG eligible type projects. That 30% number for us is over $30 million, as you know. The potential for the regulatory changes would be a $22 million change, and the Treasury's final rule is expected any time now. I know that we're going into the holidays, and I know the Treasury wants to get it right so that they don't have to change anything again. So it could be a little while, but the comment period closed in July. So that's why I say it's kind of expected any day now for the Treasury to release that. That being said, with that potential for change, for the potential for legislative changes, combined with the fact that these funds are not like the CARES Act. The CARES Act had to be spent within nine months from when we received it. They did subsequently extend it, but only in the last month, and Congress had to take action, which was uncertain. But when we were planning, we felt like we only had nine months. These funds have four years for commitments and then two more years for payment, and we're only halfway through the first year. So there is a benefit to waiting to see what the final regulations are. Does it allow flexibility for $22 million more of our money? Does the potential for legislative changes actually happen? I forgot to mention that that bill in Washington passed by, I didn't even know there was such a thing, but it was passed the Senate. It passed with unanimous consent, which tells me it has a decent chance of actually becoming law if the Senate was able to agree on it and it didn't, you know, get caught up in there. So given those potentials for changes, given the long period of time we have for this, it's advisable to wait to see if we have some of the flexibility to be able to do those projects before we go back and re-wicker everything to fit the categories, because many of the projects that were on our previous list would not necessarily fit as a COVID-19 response or a water sewer broadband project. So that being said, I don't know if George wants to add anything or if anybody has any questions.
No, I would just obviously echo Ryan. I think that in this case, waiting a little bit is very prudent. We're in, again, very good shape in terms of, you know, we have the money, 107 million coming our way. We have half of it here, another half will come, but I think that it'd be really wise to resist committing it until we know all the rules. We have, you know, fielded, you know, some issues already. We're aware of that, so the housing that we had done, we were looking at this money, and there was also the Veterans Homeless Center that we have at least said that there could be funding for that. So again, I would look for maybe a workshop in January, especially if we can get an answer on the legislative changes. I think it would be a good time, beginning of the year, when we normally have workshops anyway, I think it'd be a good time to take a look and see if we can revitalize the list and update it and if we have all the information that we need.
Councilwoman Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. So I can, I guess, agree with not reallocating or going through the additional funds that didn't fall in those four categories. However, those that did fall, the dollars that are under the categories like broadband, right, we can anticipate some additional funds being available for that because we know there's going to be some changes. So I know we're working on an RFP to come out sometime in the very near future, I believe, regarding broadband. And I'm interested to see how that could be expanded, because from what I've seen as far as recent numbers of unserved broadband customers in our county, there's certainly a need, and especially in my district. So I believe that RFP is going to be, was going to be limited, and I'm interested in seeing that opened up a bit more to serve District One unmet needs in regarding broadband. So I'm interested to see how that would impact, what those numbers look like.
Well, the project list that was previously discussed had both projects that fed, that fit into Category A COVID responses and a Category D water and sewer, and Category D also included broadband, but broadband was not officially one of the things that Counsel had at the workshop. Given that the revenue loss numbers, that category will not be able to be utilized quite as much, there is a need to come back and see what we want, what the priorities of Counsel are to allocate those funds, and if broadband is one of those things, there are, there will be less revenue loss, so there will be more that needs to fit in COVID response and more that needs to fit in water sewer and broadband.
But I guess my question is, if we have an RFP that's going out, is that not focused on broadband in current dollars or this, these dollars?
I think we're getting, I'm going to have Janine come up and talk about, I don't, I don't think what we have going out, it's either not going out yet or there's some, I want to hear what.
Janine Jennings, Business Services. We, we have continued to look and field all the opportunities that are coming through with broadband. We've just never stopped looking at it, and we're aware that there's a lot of grants out there that are, that are for broadband, plus, as Ryan said, there may be some more funding. In anticipation and because of the amount of emails and things that are coming through, we have been kind of gearing up that if it is the decision of the Counsel to move forward with broadband, then we have started kind of working on a structured RFP upon approval of Counsel for, for the broadband. So we've done a lot of research with the other people, other municipalities in Florida and how they're doing it, and we were just trying to get a little bit of a jump on things. So we don't have anything, you know, that will hit the road tomorrow, but once we have approval that you do want to move forward with some sort of broadband, we will tighten up those specifications and we can move forward. Also, what we will kind of need an idea how much money we want to put towards broadband, because one of the things we're looking for is a match in a partnership with somebody else.
Right. So again, is broadband something that has to wait till next quarter for us to have that discussion, since we know it's an area that we'll be addressing?
It doesn't have to, but I don't think it's wise to start picking apart projects. I would think it'd be better to do them in a workshop situation where you're taking a more holistic approach and looking at all the items together. And, you know, all we've done so far, as Janine said, is we're doing the research with an anticipation that broadband is kind of back on the table due to the fact that we know some of this money will be shifting back over into that category. But again, I don't know what the entire Counsel feels, the majority of the Counsel, so unless it's the desire of the Counsel to bring that as a separate item ahead of time, you know, we were planning on bringing that stuff back more in the form of a workshop where you can look at all the items and then decide and do an allocation of how much you'd like to put into that, each of the categories.
Vice Chair, William.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Georgia's recommendation. Broadband is extremely important, Ms. Gertman, and I definitely support that we engage in that as quickly as possible, but I do, I would like to have the full picture of what we have and how we can allocate all of the funds, and I don't think we have that right at this moment. So I would like to wait till the workshop to make that decision on going forward.
Okay.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I also agree with County Manager that I think we need to look at the whole picture all at once. I think all of this is important, but instead of piecemeal it, that we sit down and make an actual roadmap of where we want to go.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. You know, I've been looking at this as a, as a good news, bad news thing, but really, it's a good news, good news, because we are getting more information like broadband and the possibilities there, more environmental issues that we could deal with. So I think this gives us maybe a second bite at the apple to go back and look at the total funding, and I don't think, unless you heard differently, I know that you have met with people in broadband as I have, I don't think waiting till January hurts that. I know you're anxious. It is your district. I happen to live in your district.
I know.
And it doesn't help me at all. They're not coming to my house, but I still think it's very important for the majority of the people.
But I'm asking them to come to your house. I said expand.
Well.
Because I don't see why we would jump over Dillon Springs, you know, with what's being discussed. And matter of fact, if the dollars are enough, why aren't we addressing Oak Hill? Because there's another area there that's pretty dense. So I just think, you know, I think we need a, I think we need a workshop on broadband so we can see what that opportunity is, so when we come together, we have a better idea of what we're looking at. By that time, we would have had a housing workshop, so we'll have a better idea of what we're looking at there and what those needs are, maybe even the water project. So.
Sure, I think it's not a bad idea to maybe take some separate time just to look at the overall need for broadband. And then again, yeah, when we have a workshop, then you'll have had a little bit more background. Just not make a decision on, on it until the actual, on that. And you're correct, there'll be some other items. We'll have had the Housing Summit, and so you'll have background on that. And it is my intention, and I would like to get it in, there was an earlier mention of updating the, the Water Quality Plan and the, also really the Quality Assurance Plan that we have done. After the last meeting, it became apparent that we really do need to give the Counsel an update on those projects because there is so many of them. Almost every meeting, there's been a grant or something that someone's been up to that talks about water quality, so I would like to have that. It would be a short, but I think thorough, update on all those projects because we have not taken the totality of the program to Counsel since, I think, 2017. So I guess it's time to get that updated as well.
I think there was probably a pretty good chance you were going to hear a call, maybe three calls, for a workshop on, on water quality, on low impact development, and, and now this one for broadband. So why don't we reserve those? We can make motions and vote on them at the time. We can make motions and vote on them at the time that we do council's comments. Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
I won't forget it. Well, you won't forget it. Ryan, I just, I have a quick question. You mentioned that tourism was way up and that's maybe a surprise to, to some. It's, it's very good news. It's a restricted category. You know, besides the fact that all those people coming spend a lot of money in the, in the community at hotels, motels, restaurants, entertainment, how else does that money from the tourism tax benefit the county?
The, the taxes that we commonly group together that we call tourism tax are actually two things, the convention development tax and the tourism development tax. The convention development tax goes to the advertising authorities for promotion of, of the areas and everything that those advertising authorities do. The tourism development tax goes to support the Ocean Center and the debt, its pledge to the debt for the Ocean Center.
Maybe we can pay it off this year.
There's, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of debt.
The expansion was, was not something that one year can cover.
So, the greater the tourism is, the better it's, it's going to help to retire that debt?
Yes.
This is, again, I, I think we can look at this as, as good news. You know, we just, we went through budget workshops, budget hearings, and there was very cautious projections made of, of revenue. Now, we're seeing that revenue is coming in. We don't know what property taxes will be yet, they're just going out. So, we'll, we'll, we'll see that in the next few months if, if we have a similar increase there. Let's hope that we do and that we are, we're surprised on the, on the good side. Can I get a, a motion to approve the report as offered in a?
You did, you did both, the motion and the.
I didn't hear him, okay. Okay, motion by Johnson to approve, second by Lowery. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
I do want to just provide one more clarification. Council has previously approved the coronavirus leave. That is coming out of these funds and in the previous budget allocation. For coronavirus expenditures like PPE and stuff like that, there has been an allocation and there has been expenditures in those areas where we don't have a budget for the coronavirus leave, for example. And for COVID-19 responses, there was a $2 million budget allocated for that. We are expending out of that where it makes sense or is legally available to do, just, just so the council is aware that we are still doing those things that council previously approved. All right?
Thank you. That takes us to item five, Beach Special Event Permit 21-087, beach tram service. And he's still here.
This is it. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. This item is application for a beach special event permit for a beach tram service. The application is from Randy Jordan, President of Sun Buggy Fund Rentals Incorporated. An applicant is requesting to obtain a permit for their trams to operate up and down the beaches to provide transport to different destinations on the beaches in Volusia County. They are also requesting a variance in the permit for the length of the vehicle and trailer. The current beach code has a max of 33 feet and they are requesting that to be extended to maximum length of trailer and vehicle to 55 feet. I believe there are some photos in your package that shows what they are proposing. They will sell passes for the tram online and off-site, which is one of the conditions we have put on the permit. They will not be sold on the beach. Hours of operation will be the opening of the beach. They will close one hour before beach closure time, which is approximately 6:00 PM during turtle season and approximately one hour prior to sunset and non-turtle season. They also have requested a route, which we have also attached a map that basically starts on International Speedway Boulevard. The tram will turn and drive south on the beach to Dunlaught Boulevard, exit off the beach to Atlantic Avenue, turn and drive south to re-enter the beach at the Amelia Avenue Approach, drive north and exit at Silver Beach, and then back to International Speedway. Sun Buggy Fleet presently consists of tram, trucks capable of towing and recovery. Applicant will work closely with all Volusia County officials involved and be prepared to close operations during high tide or any other weather-related, weather-related events. They're also requesting permission to continue to have access to, to enter the beach when it is closed, when the beach is at capacity. This is very similar to a item that we brought to you in July 2021. And there are some additional conditions attached to this as well. Chief Etheridge is here, should you have any questions. Attorney Soria is here, if you have any questions of him. And I believe the applicant is here, if you have questions for them.
Councilwoman Gertman?
So, the question in July was, did we need a tram? And let's have a pilot for a year to see if we do. So, if we have a pilot to see the necessity of it, do we need to, to determine, determine the necessity? That's, that's my only question if it's, to see one work and be successful and then determine if you should have another, right? Versus having two before it's even defined, the necessity and the benefit and the impact?
It's, it's an interesting question. I don't know if anybody on the council has received complaints or feedback about the, the pilot. I'm wondering if the appearance of this second interested party means that they see success in it. But does anybody have any feedback for Councilwoman Gertman on her question as should we proceed with the second one during the pilot period?
Danny Robbins?
Thank you, Chair. I don't see an issue with it. Obviously, like you said, there's got to be a need for it if we have somebody else automatically interested in it. I wouldn't be opposed to it and kind of see where it goes from here. It might be, might be something good.
Director Etheridge, have you, what's your experience been with the pilot so far?
Good morning, Director Etheridge, Beach Safety. It hasn't actually been in process yet. They're still building their trams, so they haven't actually been out there and working. The, the agreement was that their, their pilot program would start when their trams were completed. We have not yet signed that permit, so they haven't started. The only benefit I can see to these different programs is that they are distinctly different trams, so we may get a better look at which one would function better in our beach environment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lowery?
I move approval for this with the four can, I would say five conditions that are there on our, on our notes and so forth. I move approval.
Motion by Lowery to approve, second by Robbins. Discussion, Ben Johnson?
I think it might be good, I did try both. When, like Anna came up and told us, you know, there are two different types of trams and get an idea of what's going to work, vehicle-wise and all. And it may be a way that we can start getting people on the beach when we can't otherwise or full, you know, vehicle traffic, how to get people down there with their towels, et cetera, when we can't put more people, more cars on the beach. I think it might be wise to try it out and let's just see how it works out.
There's actually four conditions there, I'm misspoke.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's two sets of conditions. There's the five environmental conditions and then there is four additional conditions that, that's the one that sets, you know, the one-year pilot program, that they can't do any transactions on the beach. So, we would recommend that you just approve the permit with all of staff's recommended conditions.
Okay. That, that'll be my motion then.
Yes.
I think that's how everybody took it with, as written and Danny Robbins said that's, that's fine with him. I don't see any other discussion, so let's, let's vote. The motion is to approve this special event permit 21-087 with all of the requirements as listed in two separate categories. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear the motion carries six to zero.
Mr. Chair, may I just have clarification? That is for one year for a trial? Am I correct in that?
Yes, it's, it's a one-year pilot program. The conditions are the same, exact same.
I just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Chair, I believe you have a public participation card?
We do. John Nicholson. And I'm probably disappointed now because we already voted, but.
John Exon, Daytona Beach side. Yeah, not that it would change anything, but I do have a couple of problems. 55-foot length is the width of an entire property, not just the house. In my neighborhood, it is the width from property line to property line plus a trailer. It is huge. The turning radius, I'm not quite sure it's going to be able to turn onto the beach at that length. I don't object to the idea of having this, although I'm not quite sure why. But as Ben said, we have to figure out what the value is. And we do need to get people onto the beach, which is my second question. They're not allowed to accept any fares. So, people can get down to the beach and they can't get back? Is that the, the way it's going to work? Or do they have a coupon or a ticket that they show to get back on? There's, to me, if, if somebody is tired, if it's an old lady or whatever, and they need to get off the beach and they see it, sorry, you can't get on. We're public transportation. We're here to get people on and off the beach, but we're not allowing you to get on and off the beach. Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't like the, the perception that this is a public service that people can't use. It's, it's a kind of, it's junked. So, I understand a year's a long time. Can they come back and modify if there's problems that pop up? If they can modify them throughout the year? Thank you.
And we do have other comments by council members. Vice Chair Billy Wheeler?
Yes. I just wanted clarification too on this, that it was 55 total feet, correct? That's with the trailer and the truck? It's not the trailer 55 and then, correct?
Paul Soria, Senior Assistant County Attorney. That is correct.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Truck plus trailer is 55 feet. And, and to answer Mr. Nicholson's question, an applicant can always come before this, this council again and request the modification of the special event permit. Only, we've written the conditions such that only the council can amend or renew the permit. It's not within staff's discretion.
Looks like everybody's good. Okay, we'll move to item six, Resolutions Finding Public Purpose and Approval Issuance of Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County Housing Revenue Bonds. Michael Dyer?
Mr. Chair, Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County has requested adoption of two resolutions approving issuance of bonds and finding a public purpose for two housing projects that will provide affordable housing in Daytona Beach and Port Orange. The Housing Finance Authority has already held the required public hearings on these projects, but county council approval is required in order to meet the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code. These bonds are not a debt or an obligation on behalf of the county. We do have counsel for the Housing Finance Authority here and also at least one of the developers is present. Should council have any questions?
Thank you. Suzanne, you had a comment? Dr. Lowery?
Yeah, we, we do these things every now and then and I move approval for the resolutions supporting this.
Motion to approve by Lowery, second by Johnson. One vote is sufficient for both of these?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Seeing any discussion? Then I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approving resolutions for these housing revenue bonds, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And that takes us to 6A, Proportionate Fair Share Agreement with Daytona 634 Development. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Tad Cavesby, our county engineer. Item 6A is a proportionate fair share agreement between ourselves, Daytona 634 Development and the city of Daytona Beach for a total of $2.75 million, thereabouts. It is for a development that would occur on what is currently property just south of the airport, south of Bellevue, east of Williamson. On the overall exhibit on the screen, which is 062, or 6A-4, it would be the right-hand parcel. They would have access through Bevel, to Bevel, Williamson, and Bellevue. Staff recommends approval.
Ben Johnson?
I'll make a motion to approve proportionate fair share agreement with Daytona 634 Development LLC in the city of Daytona Beach for the Hillwood Daytona Beach Development.
Second, Wheeler.
Motion by Johnson to approve, second by Wheeler. Any discussion? I'll just, for the, for the purpose of the public, I will let you know there has been a lot of discussion with council members, with staff. And apparently, this seems to everybody, including me, that this is a, a, will be a benefit for future economic development, opening up this area. So, with that said, no other discussion requests. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, six to zero. And you're staying right there. Go ahead.
Item 6B is another agreement with Daytona 634 Development LLC. This is a use agreement in which they would construct the extension of Pelican Bay Drive from the south where it currently terminates just north of Bevel, up through the airport's property. As you can see there on the Daytona Beach Master Plan 06B-3, the portion of which they would construct in red would be ours. That's the extension Pelican Bay Drive itself. And then the portion in yellow would be their driveway. They're planning to construct a 2.8 million square foot warehouse-type facility. This portion of road section would be utilized for truck access to Bevel. They've agreed to restrict their truck access too strictly Bevel and not utilize the driveway connections to Bellevue or Williamson for that traffic. Provides an easier access to the two interstates as well as to our benefit. It keeps their trucks off of as much of the county system as possible. They'll construct it and then maintain both sections until such time as we extend Pelican Bay Drive to the north or the airport leases one of the properties that would utilize that portion of Pelican Bay. At that point, the portion of Pelican Bay becomes ours to maintain. The driveway portion in yellow will always be their responsibility for maintenance. Staff recommends approval.
Ben Johnson?
I'll make a motion to approve use agreement with Daytona 634 Development LLC for the construction of the extension of Pelican Bay Drive.
Once again, Johnson makes a motion to approve.
Once again, Johnson makes a motion to approve. Wheeler seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Brings us to item seven. And this is a public hearing. I don't know if you have, you're getting ready to have one. Request for rezoning of an 85.55 acre parcel of land located at 760 Bennett Road in Pearson. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. For you today is an application by Darren on behalf of the owners of this 86.5 acre parcel located in the town, near the town of Pearson. The subject property is rural in use and in nature. There is an existing silviculture operation on there. The ownership of the property started utilizing the land for a variety of outdoor pursuits, hunt, club, those types of things. And over years, came through and actually did some improvements that kind of pushed it beyond those agricultural uses. They were caught by our code enforcement based on some complaints because they were doing some grading work associated with a motocross track. When we investigated that complaint, we discovered that they had installed five cabins, also some accessory structures such as garages to store some of the equipment. They had also constructed a skeet shooting range as well as the aforementioned motocross track. At that point, the ownership was made aware that some of these uses pushed beyond the acceptable uses allowed within the agricultural and resource corridor zoning categories, and that they needed to also address some of the impacts that they had done to the wetlands with the installation of the motocross track and the skeet shooting range. So the ownership worked with staff to identify what could be done to legitimize the uses that they had out there, and what would be needed in regards to permitting to ensure that they could comply with the code. Again, there is a simple misunderstanding because this is a very rural area, and these are typically rural types of uses. The thing is, is that when you start getting more than one structure on the property that are not associated with the rural activity, and once you start doing land clearing for a motocross track, it does change it from being purely a rural pursuit to something that's more of an outdoor recreation use. So staff recommended that if they wanted to try and keep all of these uses, to please go forward with rezoning to PUD. The PUD is a venue that we utilize. It's a zoning category that allows for uses that otherwise may not be allowed in that particular area, subject to a bunch of conditions and criteria. So what we see is that the property owners have worked with the staff to come in and put restrictions in regards to use. The main concern was that we had five cabins where they are trying to make those into five residential structures onto those areas. The motocross track, which is again more of a active recreational use that wouldn't otherwise be allowed out there. So they were able to work through, put in those conditions, and identify specific limitations on the property so that we know that it would be continued to be utilized for these generalized rural uses. They've also agreed to go forward with all permitting necessary for the structures and for doing mitigation and repair for any damages done to the wetlands out in this area. This is the concept plan that will oversee and basically regulate how the rest of this property will be used for now until they either sell it or try to change this PUD. You can see the cabins, the garage, and then the general locations of the wetlands and the motocross tracks. Again, we understand that they're trying to basically limit the use, trying to restrict it so it's tied to these purely recreational uses, not trying to do anything that would violate the land use or the zoning regulations in there. So staff has made a recommendation of approval to your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. And at the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, we did not have any public comment or any other method of being contacted by residents or neighbors. What we did see is that there were some discussions specifically by the PLDRC members about the requirement for a paved parking space. Again, this is for a handicap. It caused a great deal of discussion, and what was at the root of it was, by providing that, does that give them, you know, kind of justification to come back for a commercial designation? And the answer is no. The fact is, is that if you're providing for a handicap space, you're providing for a handicap space. It does not necessarily give you any kind of vesting or intent to use for a commercial property. So the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, after the discussion, recommended unanimously to this county council to approve the proposed PUD as it's presented to you today. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer it. Susan Jackson, who oversaw the project, is here, and I also know the applicant's attorney, Darren Elkin, is here as well.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Gertman, motion to approve, second by Lowery. We do have requests from the public. Darren Elkin? Does anyone have any questions? Don't see any coming up. I'll just add to that that, well, I actually do have a question for you, Clay. Was there damage to the wetland?
Yes, sir, there were impacts to the wetlands. They would have to come back and basically remove and restore as well as mitigate. So that means if there was any plant material removed or anything else, they would have to do a replanting plan. They would also address the buffer impacts.
So they will have to, but it's not been completed yet?
They will not, all of this, all of the permitting, all code enforcement, all that is waiting on what happens with this PUD. If the PUD is denied, then they're taken to the code board for noncompliance, and then they would have to go through and follow through with the mitigation. If the PUD is approved, then they would follow through with the wetland permit, and they would do the mitigation that way. So one way or the other, they're going to be obligated to correct the impacts that they had. This is the method to allow and legitimize the uses they have out there. If y'all deny the PUD, then they would have to just go back and remove those things that are not otherwise permitted.
Who does that inspection?
The, our inspections, the environmental management department of Volusia County. That would be handled by Keith Abramson and Brenda Boisette.
Okay. Any other questions? Did you want to?
If I may, just briefly. Again, my name is Aaron Elkin, 142 East New York Avenue. I did want to let you know the wetland alteration permit, the biologist from Carter Environmental has already gone through the work, met on site, actually multiple times with county staff, and determined exactly what needs to be done. Wetland alteration permit has been applied for, so it's in the works and it's going to get done. Truthfully, the fellow who's from the area who did the excavation for the fill for the motocross track thought he was staying outside of the wetland, and he just didn't. So it'll be taken care of and taken care of well, I'm sure.
Thank you. Which is why the county requires permits to begin with. However, this is kind of my neighborhood, a little bit north of me. So I understand how we, we do tend to get ahead of ourselves sometimes in this neighborhood. I think it's appropriate when that happens, and it does come to everybody's attention, that there is a pathway for a resolution and even forgiveness sometimes to be able to move ahead as, move ahead as long as everything has been taken care of. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, was that an admission of guilt of some sort?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Dwight, you don't have to get permits for children, do you? Because I did exceed that limit.
I'd say if you did, you'd be busy down here at the county building.
Okay, then. Yeah, we better. All in favor of approving this resolution as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thanks, Ben. And we, you're still here?
Yes, sir.
For item eight? Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, agenda number eight is a resolution approving a rezoning of two properties totaling over 53,000 square feet. This is on the south side of Doyle Road, approximately 600 feet from the intersection of Autumn Ridge Road and near the city of Deltona. It's going from B4, which is a commercial zoning, to B5, which is a more intensive commercial zoning. The subject property is located, as we said, on the south side. As you can see, it's kind of a hodgepodge of B4 and B5. And what is, there were some existing uses out there. I believe it was a lounge that is burned down and is now a vacant piece of land. The whole point behind this is to basically get a uniform zoning across the entire property so that it could be developed for a self-storage warehouse. The applicant is looking to try and clear this up. The reason why this is needed, whenever you have zoning lines, we have setbacks from those zoning lines. So if I have a piece of property that's B4 or B5, we have to have setbacks from those separate zoning lines. This is going to be developed as a unified parcel. As you can see, a majority of the land that has the B5 is already abutting many of the residential properties immediately to the south. This gives you a little bit better understanding is that parcels A and B on this image are the ones that are looking for the rezoning to B5 so they can be basically incorporated into parcel C for a master development. A and B don't meet the minimum acreage that is required for the B4 zoning. So this would help, one, get rid of nonconforming lots, two, get a larger parcel that could be developed for the proposed use. The proposed use is allowed by right in the B5 and allowed by special exception in the B4. So we're not talking about a rezoning that's really altering whether or not it's allowing in more intensive use. The other aspect of it is the self-storage warehouse use, which is not guaranteed that it's going to be in there, but it's the intent of why we're here, is a low-traffic generator, low-noise generator. Is actually, if you're looking for a commercial use to abut a residential development, self-storage warehouse is one of the better ones because it does have a compatibility. Because, again, the hours of operation, the noise, the lights, et cetera, are minimized. This gives you an idea of what's, the comparison between the B4 and B5 zoning. So it talks about, you know, all of the setbacks, all of the other standards. As you can see, they are very, very similar. The main thing is that the B5 does allow for a greater number of uses in there. Those uses are identified in your staff report and in the follow-up documents from the PLDRC. As you can see, this is the aerial showing the property we're talking about. It's currently vacant. Gives you an idea of looking at the area again. We sent it forward to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission as your staff with a recommendation of approval. At the meeting, there were some concerns identified from some of the adjacent property owners as to whether or not this would have a negative impact on their property. It was a valid question, is this going to basically further allow for greater intrusion into a residential area? Well, the fact is, is that the majority of the property that's abutting the residential area already has the B5 zoning, as you can tell by the exhibits that we provided. So as you can see, parcel C, which already has the B5, has the greatest amount of interface with the residential lots. A has access to that one particular piece of property, and B is surrounded by the B5. So therefore, what you're seeing is that the actual zoning will have very limited impact per se on residential development in that area, but will eliminate two nonconforming lots and allow for the whole parcel to be developed for this mini warehouse use. So after the discussion with your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission and discussions with staff, the PLDRC came back with a unanimous recommendation of approval for the proposed rezoning. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Before I do that, this is a public hearing, and we have, we have one request to speak by Glenn Storch.
First of all, for the record, my name is Glenn Storch, and I represent the applicant in this case. So this is something we've been looking at. This is just good planning. This is solving a planning issue. You've got these two nonconforming pieces. We're combining them together. They're owned, all of these is owned by the same family. And so you've got these property owned by the same family with these different zonings fragmenting it. And I have an owner, or a buyer, Ben Hallett, who's right there. And Ben is going to do what we talked about. We're going to do personal storage. We're going to do it consistent with the enterprise overlay zone, so you can have the buffers, you can have the architecture, and you're going to have something that you can actually be proud of in this area that will work with the adjoining residential. It's the best of all possible worlds. And just to let you know, we've already started that process in working with staff on this. So the bottom line on this one is, this is good planning. It takes away nonconforming uses. It creates an area. It creates no additional traffic, even if this was at the maximums. No additional traffic because B4 and B5 have the same traffic calculations. But in this case, because of the fact we're doing the personal storage, it's going to reduce traffic enormously and at the same time allow us to put in a, probably a six-to-eight million dollar investment in this area, which will also provide, of course, tax-based revenue and a use that the folks in Deltona need because they need personal storage. I mean, that's the only reason we do these things. So we have been here to answer any questions. If you have any questions, we have the engineer here, Matt Doust. If you have any questions, I don't think there's any questions for him. But the bottom line is, from a, from a use standpoint, from a zoning standpoint, this meets all the boxes. And that's one of the reasons why you have a staff recommendation approval, unanimous planning board recommendation approval, and we're here to answer any questions we can.
Thank you. And I don't see any other, any other requests from the public, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council, Councilman Johnson?
Motion to approve as written.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Johnson, second by Lowery. Ben, did you have a, no, you didn't. Nobody has a question for the other, Ben? Okay, then we'll all call for the vote, all in favor of the motion as written. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You could go to work. Item nine, Ordinance 2021-34, First Hearing, Amending Chapter 72, Article Two of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Home-Based Businesses. This is in response to the changes in the law from the Florida Legislature.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Irvin?
Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Several months ago, we brought forward to you a discussion item in order to bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with newly passed state law that basically preempted local governments from regulating home-based businesses. Prior to the state taking this action, Volusia County had delineation of home-based business A and B. A being more of your office-type use, which was allowed under certain conditions in residential zoning districts, and home-based B, which was a little bit more intensive, which was mainly geared toward your agricultural rural areas. With the law being signed in by the governor, we no longer can implement those rules and regulations. So our first part of this ordinance is to strike the definition of home occupation type A into type B from our definitions, and to strike that use from all of the zoning districts contained in our land development code and zoning ordinance. Then the second aspect of it is to take and incorporate the new rules that the state has put in place in regards to home-based businesses. This opens up many of our residential areas to businesses that otherwise we would not have necessarily allowed, such as contractors' offices and those types of things. It also allows for limited retail. It allows for a limited number of employees coming and parking that's contained in there. We basically mimic the state law to give our code enforcement staff the ability to address if we get any complaints from our residents. It's not going to be taking away any of the rights of the property owners who are looking to operate the home-based business. It's just going to make sure that the conditions that the state deemed appropriate for this to occur are being enforced. We feel that doing this gives your local law, code enforcement folks, a little bit more of a handle because otherwise, we would not be able to follow through at a local level and basically have to refer it up. So now, what we're seeing here is that we've gone in, we've created the home-based business definition and how the conditions associated with it, so that that way, if we do have, experience a homeowner who is operating outside of the state law, our local code enforcement can go and seek compliance. can go and seek compliance. And I want to make sure that's very clear. The code enforcement effort is not to be punitive. It's not to be basically the sword of Damocles coming on these folks. It's to bring it into compliance so that that way, if someone does have a valid home-based business and it's simply a matter of storing the equipment properly or making sure that they have the correct number of employees, we can let them know so that they can operate within the law. That's the primary goal of today's ordinance. If there's any questions, I know Paolo, who's been instrumental in drafting it, is available to answer any of the detailed questions.
This is also a public hearing. Do you have any requests to speak on this item? Okay. Then I'll, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions?
I move approval for ordinance 2021-34, first hearing, amending code of ordinances.
Motion by Lowery, second by Johnson. Then we're either going to need another vote or we can, you can include it in this one with, to schedule the second public hearing for December 14th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. Can we do all of that in this one vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Include that, my motion.
That's included, seconded by Johnson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. This may be a first. Item 10, redistricting following the 2020 census. And I am going to open this up to, for a public hearing because I know there's someone who wanted to speak to it. Before we get to that, if we will, we'll go to the staff report.
Thank you very much, Sabrina Slade, Assistant County Attorney. As you guys recall, on October 28th, at the joint meeting, we selected a map. It has been known as redistricting plan F I five A, and that was approved by two-thirds vote. So thank everyone for making that very difficult decision. So just wanted to give you, this, this was actually scheduled in case we did not select a map, but this is, we're using this placeholder to update you on what we're doing next. So the next process, next step in the process is to start drafting the boundary description, legal description, and then bring back an ordinance for you to approve, also by two-thirds vote, on December 14th, 2021, at that meeting. So if anyone has any follow-up questions or anything, I know it was a long meeting on the 28th. We'll, we can go through that. If anybody wants to see the map, Megan has the, we can put the map up on her.
And Sabrina, so, and the reason why it has that A designation is it suggested to reflect the fairground property into District One?
That is correct. There was a verbal amendment to the, the map that we presented on the 28th, just to add an unpopulated section, take it out of three and move it into five. Or, yeah, three into one, sorry.
Can we just keep that map up while the, we have two members of the public that would wish to speak. It might be helpful for them. The first was Wanda Van Damme.
Megan, can you put up the F I five A? That's the current district.
For the record, Wanda Van Damme, I am a 30-year resident of Osteen. With me today is Mrs. Glenda Ross. Her family has been in Osteen for generations. Her daddy was an authentic Osteen cowboy, so she's been here for most of her life. I want to say that I appreciate all the effort that has gone into this. I know this is a long process. I know this is a difficult process. And after staring at this border between District Three and Five for the last three days, trying to figure out what we can do to make this better, I understand that you are over it and you want to move on. But I would ask, as you are looking at this, if you would please take a look at the maps that I asked that you be given and consider making a change to what is on, I believe, what is on the map now. If you look at that map, you will see that there is a green line in the center of the map that goes from north to south. If we move toward the east from that line, you will see that the line, the division has been drawn along the boundary of the city of Deltona on the south side, but it has not been done on the north side. And I would ask that that continue up and go along the city boundary on the north side as well. Then when we get closer into Osteen proper, I would ask that, again, the city boundaries, like they are other places on the map and like they are in other areas, that the city boundary again be followed so that we can take those unincorporated areas and put them into District Three. That is, if the decision has been made, that the communities of Enterprise and Osteen are to be divided. Obviously, our first choice would be to remain together and remain whole in one district, but if that has been determined or will be determined that that's not possible, then our second choice is to lessen the impact. And my choice is to lessen the impact as much as possible on the community of Osteen. And by taking that portion of the unincorporated area, which is to the east of that green line, you will be doing a number of things. You are going to lessen the population deviation between District Three and District Five. Those two districts now have the greatest population deviation. If you take that portion of unincorporated to the east of that green line, you are going to knock that deviation way down. So that is one thing that I would ask you to take into consideration. It will keep the majority of my community intact. It will not have any impact on any other districts, and it will keep Mr. Lowery within his District Five. So if the decision is made that we are going to be splitting District Three and District Five through Enterprise and Osteen, I'm asking you to please consider being consistent in following the city boundaries. Thank you for all your efforts on this.
Thank you. It's interesting. Let me call the second person from the public and then I know we have staff or counsel would like to ask some questions. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I didn't go to the meeting the other night because I had an important one in Daytona Beach that I had to attend. I thought things were going with the idea that we're going to contain as much as we can the cities. And there are also, I consider Seville, Enterprise, Osteen as cities. They will eventually be one, and we should consider them, and it appeared we don't. My major concern is Beachside. I like both my representatives. Billy, it has nothing to do with you. But with the city of Daytona Beach, we still have gerrymandering, all right? It goes from one end of our city to the other end, and it divides our community, it divides our interests, all kinds of things. And what this map is going to do, the same thing that happens in Daytona Beach all the time. Billy gets all of the tourists. If you look at the map, that's where the tourist industry is. When we look at our two divisions, our basic divisions, between Heather and Billy, she gets the tourism. She gets the education, she gets the manufacturing, she gets the population centers. Everything, anything that basically Daytona Beach has is in Billy's. She also gets like six cities, all right? She gets all of Ponce Inlet, she gets all of the shores, she gets all of downtown Daytona Beach, she gets all of South Daytona, all right? Then she gets Port Orange. So there's so much that she has to deal with. And I know you guys don't look at that, and they don't look at it either behind me, all right? But that's what we, as residents, look at. So you pile it on one person, all right? The other person gets the suburbs, all right? There really isn't a lot to do out in the suburbs. There are not a lot of meetings to go to out in the suburbs. So Billy gets all of this. In the city of Daytona Beach, we have Quanida. We have five C R A zones. Guess how many Quanida has? Five. And the D V A. So she gets all of the meetings, all of the things that has to be done. So this is what you're doing in your map, and it worries me a little bit, so that in the future, and not only do you all will be here, but for the record, there are other things than just bodies. There are places of interest, there are schools, there are all these other things that will overload our representatives. And I, I have said this a million times, I like my Fab Four. The two new ones are really good, but you can get overloaded. You can have too much on your plate. Correct, Ms. Kurtman? So I'm asking you, in the future, to look at these things. We need to have access. I have access to both of mine, but you feel guilty when they've got six million things to do and the other one doesn't? So again, a little balance goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close the public hearings. Attorney Stack, would you like to reply to this idea?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, and I'm going to ask Sabrina to continue on and also correct me if I misstate anything, which she's good at doing. And I appreciate that. So one of, you know, one of the challenges we have, we have a couple of challenges in this process. One, it's about, have about half the time that we normally have to complete the redistricting process, and that's through no fault of the counsel or your staff. It's just that the federal government's giving us this data late. We have historically been very cautious in how we've drafted these to keep the districts as close as possible, the idea of not having any voter dilution. And so the parameter of trying to keep a deviation between districts of one percent has worked out well historically in avoiding these disputes. The last part, and it's not anything that I have to do, but your staff, mainly Public Works and G I S staff have to do, is write a legal description or describe in words the boundaries of each of these districts and afford them the time to do it. Basically, the, the month of November has been set aside to do that, and that's why we had scheduled tentatively, this being the last date really, it would be feasible to select a map so your staff can go forward and bring back an ordinance to you. In speaking with Ms. Slack last week, or yesterday, excuse me, I know she's had a number of discussions with the person who'd be responsible for your surveyor essentially, and G I S staff, because you have a few unincorporated areas that are reflected in the handout that Ms. Van Damme had, and also it's been part of where your staff has relied on, that areas are up against incorporated Deltona but are not moved to District Three under this proposal. Sabrina, I'm going to, context helps me, so I'm going to ask you to correct me if I'm misstating it, but you don't have an exact population of the Osteen Enterprise area, but I think you were telling me it's about 3,600?
Roughly, it's approximately 3,600. It's a difficult area to identify because Deltona has annexed in some of it. If you could turn it, Megan.
So, under the map that you selected last week, just running some of the numbers, you've, you've encompassed an overwhelming portion, a large portion of that into District Three here. So it's remaining in a few pockets. So one of the questions we had, I, we were kicking around yesterday was, what is feasible? And if, if there was an adjustment to capture another portion of this, one of these pockets and still be within the deviation that we've been operating under? And also what your surveyor can do? I'm going to ask Ms. Slack to just give an overview because it might ease some of the concern.
Right. So obviously, when we're doing this, we had a lot of things to consider, a lot of areas to keep in mind, but overall, the primary concern we have is, is the population to keep. These are election districts. So the, the most important driving force is to make sure everyone vote is equally weighted with a member. So, you know, we, we did the math, we had a lot of considerations, and so in this area, defining what is Enterprise and Osteen makes it, it's a little difficult because of the way Deltona has annexed south and east. So what we did was we ran as many scenarios as we could. We talked with the surveyor about different issues with the pockets and enclaves, where the lines would go. The line, as it is currently created, is driven partially by staying on Doyle Road or DeBerry Avenue for legal description and to capture approximately the 2,500 people that needed to be added to District Three and taken out of District One. So what you have here is a line that currently divides the population, rough numbers, because it's a hard area to identify. Rough numbers, you have about a third of the Osteen Enterprise area in District Five and about two-thirds of that population in District Three. So when we ran the different scenarios, really, the, the only possibility of what we could potentially do is where the straight line is of Doyle Road, there is a semicircle of unincorporated area. It basically starts west of where Cortland and Doyle Road meet, and you go west, and you can see it as a white pocket. It's not easy to see on this map, but there's approximately 430 people in that area. The area is a straight line, open area, that the surveyor's confident would not cause him much difficulty in adding, taking out a five and putting in three. So then what you would end up with is the majority of the Osteen Enterprise population in three with a small part of it still in five due to the, essentially the difficulty of moving the lines on those very irregularly shaped areas.
Sabrina, is there, I don't know if there's a pointer or something, but is there a way to zoom in on that area? My understanding is what you're telling me is about, you're talking about a thousand, Sabrina, about a thousand individuals. This would capture about 500.
Right, starting with this lake here. Oh, sorry. I can't see the pointer there. Yeah, the pointer won't work on there. Yeah, the pointer doesn't show up there. But it, it's essentially a straight line. You see where there's a completely straight line along Doyle Road?
We'll figure this out.
The annotate's not working.
You have control, right?
Our annotate doesn't work. I'll keep going. Yeah, there you go. Yep.
That's Doyle Road.
I'm not doing that. I'm not sure who's doing that.
That's Doyle, I did that. That's Doyle Road.
That's Doyle Road. So if we'll, we'll have Mr. Lowery draw. Okay, so if, if, where he's drawing that green line, you see where the, the two yellow lines meet the, the green? There is a semicircle area, starting with that small lake and going around to basically where the yellow line is. So if you grab that semicircle, it's a white area there, that is, that is essentially what we're talking about. The top half of the circle divided by the line. So that, that reaches and, and that would take an unincorporated area that is not part of the city of Deltona and move it into three. So then the majority of this area would be in three and a small portion of it would be in five.
That could be an adjustment if counsel wishes, trying to operate within the numbers. Our, your surveyor said he could construct a legal description to make that work with the time schedule. It's more information than we had last week if you're interested.
Thank you. This is my district, and I'm going to be termed out another year or so, and somebody else will have that responsibility. But I have tried, I've got a couple of citizens here I hope will vouch for me. I've tried to not let Deltona dog that wags its tail all the time and try to represent these areas. And I'm afraid by subdividing them, they'll not have any representation. I mean, District Five is basically 90-something percent Deltona, about six or seven percent DeBerry. And these communities can be overlooked, and by chopping them up and dividing it up like this, you're dividing a small area into two, and one thing we were wanting to try to do is to keep it together. Now, before we, and I cannot imagine the legal description nightmare that constitutes this, plus there's enclaves, and there's just a lot of complications. Before we started, or as we started, the very first thing we did was approve Map F. Map F would, would solve this nightmare, would make the legal description a lot easier. What it does, it puts, it unifies Osteen and Enterprise back into District Five. it does, it puts, it unifies Osteen and Enterprise back into District Five. What it does, and if we look at that comparison, I won't ask anybody to pull up a map, I can just tell you, it does move Lake Helen into Three, but here's the thing, it moves it as a unit into Three, not cut all up into little pieces into Three. And I don't know if there'd be any interest or not, I can't make a motion to open the thing back up because I was on the losing team on the last vote, but I don't know if there would be a consideration to do that, to go back to Map F, which was the original map we approved before we got into the school board episode and so forth, and so I'm just asking my colleagues if there's any interest in that at all.
Kind of on the same page with you, Counselor Lowery. I don't know, is it possible we can make an amendment to our decision to make this work? Because I see it's fitting all the bills when it lessens the impact, just reviewing my notes here, the population deviation, it keeps that community intact, it keeps their voice together collectively to make sure and ensures that they will all have that. I don't have a problem with that, and I'd gladly make the motion and take on that responsibility into District Three for them.
I'll second that, if he's making a motion to reconsider, I'm not sure what he's...
Well, what, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Attorney Dyer.
What you could, what council, so a motion to reconsider would be valid during the meeting in which the motion was passed, so we're past that. So you, the council can amend something previously adopted, and it doesn't matter whether you're voting, you voted against the motion or not, so it's a little different than a motion to reconsider. The difference is it requires a two-thirds vote rather than a majority, and in this case, that's kind of a non-issue because you already need to adopt your map by two-thirds, so a vote of five under our charter. So you, if council wanted to, just wanted you to have this information because it's information we didn't have before, to make, alter the plan to incorporate what is highlighted on our monitors, I know it's not showing up up there, but this neighborhood, I wish it, which somehow could show up there so the public could see it, that we could do that through a motion to amend the map previously adopted.
So we cannot retread back to Map F?
You could make a motion to rescind the plan you've adopted and essentially start over, and then you would have to adopt a new map. What Mr. Robbins was asking me, as I understood, was adjusting the map, the plan you had approved last week to incorporate this. So you could do it, amendment, those are both avenues the council can pursue.
I just wanted to make sure, just one more thing, are we ensuring that those overlay areas are still protected, the local plans, just for their, you know, to protect their developmental stipulations that we have?
The area that we're talking about is subject to an enterprise overlay, and there's also an Osteen overlay, which deals with land development issues, it really doesn't play into election issues. Here, we're talking about purely election issues, where we're trying to make sure everyone has the same number of persons being represented by one vote on the council. This area is protected in what's known as the enterprise overlay and the Osteen overlay, and again, with those issues for land development, the entire council would be involved, but that's an entirely different issue as opposed to an election issue. And I will point out too, I mean, all of, all of the districts at some point touch another community, and there's borderline issues with all the districts. So District Four, there are people that live in DeLeon Springs that are in District Four, not in District One with their other rural neighbors. District Three reaches up and takes the western side of the land, Lake Helen, there's borderline issues throughout the map because that's how borders work. So you're dealing with this issue throughout the map. So all you can do is try and make the impact as minimal as possible, but you have to have a border somewhere, and it's a difficult issue, and it's a difficult subject. But, you know, I just wanted to point out that it's not just in the southwestern corner where we have border issues, you know, Four reaches all the way over until rural Pearson, Seville, it touches DeLeon Springs, Three does the same thing along the land, Lake Helen, and now Osteen and Enterprise. So it is an issue that is throughout the map, and it can't be eliminated, it can only be minimized.
Thank you. I think this would be a good, a good move, in my opinion, it would keep everything intact, Ms. Slack, and I'd be willing to make that motion. Mr. County Attorney, how would you like that for the amendment?
It would, you need a vote of five, because I, under our charter, I think your council's still making a decision on their plan, it'd be a motion to reconsider, or not reconsider, I'm sorry, amend the plan adopted by council to move into District Three. The pocket that was on the screen before my face went up there, and that keeps us within the bound, the deviation mix, and I know this is dangerous, roughly that would mean about 85% of the population, if you trust that 3,600 figure of Osteen and Enterprise, it would be District Three.
I barely trust my math as it is, but what...
It would be a motion to amend the plan.
Right, and just so, because I have my GIS staff here, the best description, if you were to do a motion to amend of that area, would be to relocate an area from, of Osteen from District Five into District Three, which is more particularly described as the census blocks containing the unincorporated, unincorporated area west of the intersection of Doyle Road and Cortland Boulevard, and the east intersection of Alley Number 171 and Doyle Road, specifically containing the unincorporated areas between those two intersections and north of Doyle Road up to the existing municipal boundaries of the city of Deltona. That would specifically describe the area we're talking about.
What she said.
Second, I will second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second what he said, she said.
Okay, the motion was made by Robbins to amend this map, seconded by Gertman. Ben Johnson.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about this half-moon area is the only thing we are moving, correct?
Can we put that back on, the annotated map?
That's correct, it's just a half-moon area, it's basically north of Doyle Road up to the city limits of Deltona, and it truly, it's not a half-moon, it's a jagged area.
Well, but I'm just looking for the general area of the only changes that would be made.
That is the general area, the only changes that will be made, and as we've said, it'll affect a little over 400 people. Moving them from Five into Three keeps us even more within range of meeting the 1%, actually.
Okay, because we have to be very careful, this is a lot of work going into this, in a short period of time for them to do it, sounds like smoking the bandit, doesn't it? But, you know, any way we do it, we're going to have hurt feelings somewhere, and we had a lot of people from Lake Helen, so we want to be careful that we don't start rearranging out there. A lot of people that came to that meeting, you know, our meeting also. Now, I got no issue with this half-moon, I do have a problem if we start doing so much that we have to go back to the drawing board, and that's what I want to be careful about, of not going back to the drawing board and putting our staff into limbo, and if we do that, we're going to start all over with people that are going to be unhappy, and really, the Lake Helen and Osteen people were the only real people that showed up to try to do anything about what was coming, and even on the Osteen end, we were trying to help them out because all they ever said, they wanted to stay together, not which district they were going to be in, and I had a phone call about that, where they wanted to stay in District, you know, in District Five, and we knew nothing about that, just wanted to stay together, and I can understand that. So I can support this half-moon area that we, we come in because I believe, I believe GIS staff, that you can work with that. Osteen, y'all can work with that, as much I know it's not everything everybody wants, but neither was Lake Helen everything they wanted.
Brandon Bornat, GIS manager, yes, we've evaluated extensively with Sabrina what can and cannot be done, and we're confident this can be done.
You said it's 400 people?
A little over 400.
And it was 566 difference, so that would close it up a little bit.
Yes.
All right, I can support that.
Representative Lowery, this is your district.
Well, I mean, I'm not happy, but, you know, we originally adopted Map F, started out with, and I'm not sure why we can't go back to that, sure would save legal a lot of work because the parameters are more defined along common sense boundaries and keeps things unified, so I'm not going to support it.
Okay, this vote requires a two-thirds majority, which today is five votes.
Right, and I think it, just also under the charter, the two-thirds of the full council vote, so five would be, is the appropriate number.
Okay, I don't see any other requests to speak, so I'll, I'll call for the vote on the motion as amended with the half-moon, seconded by Gertman, and with the staff saying that it's possible to redraw this. All in favor of the amendment, actually, Carissa, you better call the roll, since this is such a critical vote.
Mr. Robbins? For the record, that was yes. Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Ms. Gertman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Dr. Lowery?
No.
Mr. Brower?
Yes. So the amended motion passes five to one.
So we will prepare a map, it'll be called FI 5B, and it'll, it'll include that one little area, we'll get it to our staff to start doing the legal description, and we appreciate you taking the time. It's a very difficult decision, and on the accelerated timeframe, getting public comment, it was, it's going to be an overlapping process, so we appreciate you taking the time to go back and revisit this issue.
Every one of us up here knows how hard you have worked, how open you have been to each one of us, and how your staff has, has worked, you're to be commended, and now we're sending you back to do more work.
Well, Brandon gets to take some time off now, but now we're switching over to get the legal description done with a new team, so he's handing the baton off, so, he's done a great job though with Nancy Church also.
Yep, and it's been an honor, you know, GIS kind of shining the light on this and being able to use the tools we have to give you high-value information, so we appreciate it.
And Rayleigh sees the next exciting project we give her.
Thank you, and enjoy some time off.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item 11, Community Events Update by Kevin Captain.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable members of council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. Item number 11 is the Community Events Update, so to first start out, after last year's cancellation due to COVID-19, there's renewed excitement to enjoy 11 days of fun at the 2021 Volusia County Fair. Opening night, as always, will be free beginning on November the 4th. Each day brings entertainment, free activities, including a petting zoo, an antique barn, a tractor parade, a three-ring super circus, live music, and magic shows. There's something for the whole family, so for more information, visit volusiacountyfair.com. Also, the red-hot Chili Steppers Walking Club welcomes residents to get fit, make new friends, and enjoy the great outdoors, and they've chosen Gemini Springs Park in DeBury for their walking events from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. every Thursday in November, with exception of November the 25th. The free club is led by Volusia County Recreation Superintendent Matt Coleman, so if you have more, you want more information, call Matt at 386-736-5953. And get ready for this year's farm tours. We know that the agricultural industry is the silent engine of Volusia County's economy, with local farmers creating jobs, feeding families, and pumping more than $780 million into our local economy. So on that note, residents can visit more than eight, eight of more than 1,500 farms in Volusia County during the 40th Annual Farm Tour from 9:00 a.m. to noon on Friday, November 19th. The University of Florida Volusia County Extension and the Volusia County Farm Bureau jointly sponsor the farm tour, which has been a popular fall tradition since 1981. Participating farms represent both East and West Volusia. For more information, contact the University of Florida Volusia County Extension at 386-822-5778. And as you know, the county's been actively engaged in the Affordable Housing Initiative. At this time, I'd like to introduce Community Services Director Donna Butler and Community Assistance Director Carmen Hall to provide a quick update on that initiative.
Good morning again, council members, Donna Butler. So we're really excited about the progress of our Affordable Housing Initiative. Back in June, we started a series of five webinars that were very well-attended, then we had three workshops that we have had recently, just finishing a couple, two weeks ago. They were not as well-attended as we would have liked, but there still was an audience present, and folks can go back and watch these things online. Coming up, December 7th is our summit, we already have over 200 folks registered, so we're excited about that. It should be a full day of interesting discussion, starting at 10:00 a.m. and going until 4:00, lunch will be provided. If anyone is interested in signing up for the workshop, for the summit itself, they can do so at Community Assistance's website on volusia.org. There is also a virtual option, we have not put that out yet, but there will be a virtual option. Some of that will be able to be participated in by asking questions, and some they'll just have to view, it's just, when we're in the big ballroom, we really can't have the active participation that we would like to virtually, but everyone can still participate. Following that, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is going to be taking applications for subcommittees to take us through three areas that we want to have included in our plan. That's the growth management, which is the planning and land development regulations, funding, and then community land trust. So those meetings will then take place with some community folks involved, led by our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, the months of January, February, and March. They're going to work on, with staff, to develop this plan, they'll review it, and then forward it on to you all for your review and approval. So we're really excited, hope to see you all on December 7th. If you haven't had a chance to watch the webinars or the seminars, please do so, they'll be providing some good background information for the discussion that's going to take place on the 7th.
Thank you very much, you have a question from Councilwoman Gertman?
She's not surprised. Did I hear you right, did you say housing trust or land trust?
Community land trust.
Community land trust.
So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has actually already forwarded to you a recommendation that I presented, I think it was back in April, to move forward with the community land trust. We decided to pause that a little bit, and make sure the community, A, is supportive of it, but also talk with the community about three different ways that it could be implemented in our community. We didn't want to make an assumption on how it should be implemented if they actually want it to happen. So it's a very valuable tool in affordable housing, so we just wanted to make sure that we had a bigger discussion about it.
Okay, but that's not an exclusion of a housing trust?
No, that would be under the, the funding subcommittee, would, would discuss the funding portion.
All right, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Donna, we'll continue the Community Events Update. There's going to be some heavy lifting at the Ocean Center, and it's the official 2021 Strongman Games taking place November 12th to the 14th. There'll be hundreds of athletes from more than 20 different countries to compete for the world's strongest, again, across nine different divisions. Attendees will watch the strongest men and women across age groups, battle and events including the log press, the car walk, the deadlift ladder, the carry and drag, the sandbag toss, and atlas stones. So there's a massive list of competitors, includes new athletes looking to establish themselves in the sport. So to get more information on that, it's www.strongman.games. DeBury Hall, there's always something happening of the many educational events coming up in November, we have a couple of educational things about how to be safe in the woods, and for goodness sakes, snakes, I'm sorry, snakes. So call Tracy Mester at 386-668-3840, and the Leonia Environmental Center also has events, many events for November, so as we approach whale migrating seasons, one of the many things you might want to consider learning about... many things you might want to consider learning about is to learn more about the North Atlantic right whales at 2 p.m. on November 6th. For more information, call Sandy Falcon. She's at three eight six seven eight nine seventy-two oh seven. And don't forget about our Explore Volusia program. With the cooler weather upon us, there's plenty of echo buggy tours, paddle events, and trail activities. So for more information on Explorer event, Explorer Volusia events, call Trey Hannah at three eight six seven three six fifty-nine twenty-seven. And just a reminder, you can go to volusia.org, under the news, click on the county calendar. All these events are listed here. They're all hyperlinked. And I will also just mention the Economic Development Q Breakfast is coming up at 8 a.m. on Friday, November 5th, and this event will be, for the first time, streamed live on Facebook and YouTube. And we are also working on next year's, or actually this year's State of the County event, which has been slated for Tuesday, February 8th. More information will be forthcoming on that event. And also, with GIS just up here, there's GIS Day as well. That's November the 17th. They usually put a little table in the rotunda to to teach the community a little bit more about what important work GIS does. And I'd like to just quick touch on the county's anti-litter initiatives for a moment, but this time with a quick focus on our beaches. As part of the Coastal Division's anti-litter initiatives, for a number of years, Volusia County continues its efforts with the fill-a-bag stations, which are installed across the coastline in partnership with local sponsors. So the fill-a-bag stations can be erected at any county-maintained beach access point as well as access points within the cities and municipalities. The fill-a-bag program was founded out of Key Biscayne originally by a gentleman by the name of Manny. Manny has a nonprofit and typically charges a small fee, it's actually a very small fee, for the official fill-a-bag signs, which in turn support the program. More information about this program can be found on volusia.org under the Coastal Division link. You'll notice sponsors such as Faneo, a county contractor, and Conservation Recreation, led by Ponson resident Delaney Pickering, who engages in beach cleanups, as well as initiatives that support the mission of the Marine Science Center. So this is, next is a picture of the fill-a-bag station at Mary McLeod Bethune Beach Park in New Smyrna Beach. This one happens to be sponsored by Beach Relief, which are New Smyrna Beach residents Wood Belcher and Tenille Mayor Belcher. We also have two fill-a-bag stations in Ormond Beach that are sponsored by Ormond Beach Rentals. And there's also Sunsplash Park sponsored by the Daytona Tortugas. So if you're interested in sponsoring a fill-a-bag station, it's not that expensive, really not. But you can just call the Coastal Division at three eight six two four eight eight zero seven two and we can get you more information. Just moving forward, I just want to put a plug out for VOTRAN. We congratulate their entire team. They've earned multiple awards from the Florida Public Transportation Association, or FPTA, at their 2021 annual conference earlier this week. Some of the awards were second-place Tier Two marketing for internal COVID information, third-place Tier Two marketing for Your Safety as a Priority, their marketing campaign, Tier Two Bus Safety Excellence Gold winner winner, Gold Award winner, and Outstanding System of the Year for the state winner. VOTRAN staff were also recognized. Scott Growth, maintenance trainer, was recognized for graduating from the Center of Urban Transportation and F dot Certified Transit Technician Program. Tamika Whitaker, Safety and Training Supervisor, was recognized for graduating from the FPTA Leadership Program, Leadership Training Program. John Fodderero, Master Technician, was recognized as the 2021 Technician of the Year. And Patricia Sparanza, Bus Operator, was recognized as the 2021 Transit Hero of the Year Award. So we sincerely congratulate VOTRAN staff and leadership for their commitment and their tightly shared organizational core values. It's really great to see such well-deserved recognition. Toot out to Kelvin there. And one more recognition. The Volusia Flagler Association of Code Enforcement has named our own Maggie Godfrey as Code Enforcement Officer of the Year, recognizing her dedication and positive attitude, and this is the first year that the award's been given. As the county's Code Compliance Officer and Coordinator, Godfrey coordinates with officers concerning job sites, meetings, code board hearings, special magistrate hearings, daily activities, and property research. Godfrey joined the county in 2007 as a staff assistant in the Division of Corrections and moved up to Corrections Officer in 2013. From there, three years later, she moved to the Code Compliance Division, where she worked her way up from Code Enforcement Board Clerk to Code Compliance Officer. So we congratulate Margaret Godfrey for this wonderful award. And we'll move now to our COVID-19 update. With us today is Ethan Johnson from the Florida Department of Health in Volusia County. Before I pass it to Mr. Johnson, though, I'd like to just give you a quick update on our social media campaigns. We continue to have four different campaigns for social media related to COVID precautionary messaging. And I'm happy to report that our reach for these campaigns have now exceeded 200,000 and our impressions haven't exceeded 745,000. We also are continuing social media advertisements to help aid in the messaging for the COVID-19 testing that's still being offered for free, and those impressions have pleasantly exceeded over 200,000. So with that, I'll ask for Assistant County Health Department Director, Mr. Ethan Johnson, to come up and provide you with the county's health department update. Johnson?
Good afternoon. All right. So the total cases are up to 75,711. Total deaths are 1,548 since the beginning of the event here in Volusia County. The case positivity still has a downward trend, but you'll notice over the last two weeks, there's this slight elevation in positivity rate. It isn't anything to be alarmed over, however. This is due to the influx of backlog cases being entered. So that positivity rate is elevated slightly higher than it than it actually is. When you adjust for the old cases that have been entered in the last two weeks, it's actually closer to about four and a half percent. So that's good. Our case numbers are continuing to fall, but of course, that's impacted by the backlog of data as well. So our case rate is currently at 83.8 cases per 100,000 population, which is still substantial transmission. But we're thinking if the cases continue to drop in the way that they have, we'll transition from that substantial transmission to moderate transmission when looking at the case rate within the next month or so. The demand for vaccination has tapered off, but vaccine continues to be readily available throughout the community and at our health department locations. These percentages are the individuals who are 12 and older who have received at least one dose of the vaccine. This past week, there were 1,291 people vaccinated. That marks about a 300, an increase of 300 residents who are vaccinated. And I think that's probably tied to the booster shot recommendations that came out a couple of weeks ago. And then speaking of boosters, there are now booster recommendations for all three of the available COVID-19 vaccines in the United States. Eligible individuals may choose which vaccine they receive as a booster dose when available. The guidance for the Pfizer booster came out about two and a half, three weeks ago. Moderna came out a week ago. So if residents wishing to get a booster, they can get a booster at any of the vaccine providers, as well as what they consider in a third dose or for individuals who are immunocompromised, they can get their third dose if they decide to do that. Additionally, the Janssen COVID-19 booster vaccines are currently recommended for individuals who have received their initial COVID-19 vaccination and at least two months have passed since their initial dose. So if you got Johnson and Johnson first, residents who want to get the booster for Johnson and Johnson, they're able to do that. Also, I'm sure you all are aware the FDA authorized the use of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for children ages five through 11. However, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices meets today and tomorrow to discuss recommendations for this age group. So these, this isn't being provided just yet, even though it's been authorized by FDA. If approved today or tomorrow, the vaccine should be available locally sometime next week. Just some of hospitalization data. This is from October 22nd to October 28th. There were 24 new admissions reported. 3.64% of beds were used for COVID patients, 11.37% ICU beds were used, all of which marking decreases when compared to the seven days prior. And then DOH continues to offer COVID-19 vaccines at all of our locations, as well as PCR testing in the Daytona Beach and Orange City locations. The demand for testing is declining. Definitely with us, we're still, we're seeing pretty low numbers in terms of testing at our sites and also at the Curative Location in Daytona Beach. The locations in New Smyrna, as well as Deltona, are doing higher numbers, much lower than they were. But that's largely because they're offering that rapid testing that a lot of the residents need to return to work or vacation or whatever. And then, of course, the focus of DOH Volusia's clinical staff is being shifted to homebound vaccinations still and outreach events. And that includes increasing COVID-19 education and outreach activities, which now also includes us investing in our plans for vaccinating children, for parents who wish to do that, especially in communities where parents may not easily have access to pharmacies or their pediatrician. So we are working in partnership with Volusia County School staff, as well as our Pandemic Win Group Project, which is a project out of Bethune-Cookman. So we'll have plans for that following the authorization and recommendations for use at five to 11-year-olds. And other than that, that is all I have for you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilwoman Gertman?
Thank you. Thank you, Ethan. What does herd immunity look like? What does that number? I see we're at 66%. So.
Well, because there's so many different arguments as to what that actual percentage is, I think in the beginning, it was based on the number of folks vaccinated. But what we know now, we're at 66%. We know that a significant portion of the population has also been infected with the virus. So some people would argue we've reached that point. That's, of course, not taken into account future variants. We don't know what the the future holds, so.
Okay. That's, that's what I was curious of. So I'm just glad to see the numbers continue to go down, but I'm still saying, you know, we still need to take some level of precaution and not just, you know, cast all the efforts aside because, again, we've got cooler months coming and potentially other variants. So let's just not let our guard down.
Yes, we're still, we're still practicing all of those mitigation strategies. And I will say there are still a lot of these numbers of new vaccinations, a lot of them are folks getting booster shots, but a lot of them are also still people receiving their first dose of the vaccine. So there's still folks out there who are deciding that they want to be vaccinated now. We want to make sure that we're, we're there.
So the numbers that you have of the thousand some odd, do you know how many of those the first time?
Not off of the top of my hand, but I could, I could figure that out for you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that brings us to the last opportunity for public participation. Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson beside. I told you there was a lot. One, I'm happy to notice that we're only going to be $31 million short. That's a nice little small number there, but that shocked the heck out of me. I thought eight million was a lot.
Thanks, man.
Secondly, I want to bring up again the bridge at ISB and Timoca Farms Road.
Yeah, all right. I'm good. If this wraps up early.
Somebody's cell phone Kevin is. On the PA. Okay.
Yeah, the city of Daytona Beach is developing the last remaining two vacant lots in the LPGA total development. So all of that will be built out. They are within 2,000 feet of ISB. You just approved a huge, massive building next to the airport. So almost all of our southern end of the city, west of or east of 95 is all being developed. This is becoming very crucial. I know I hit you very hard with the LPGA Bridge on the north end, and now everybody's griping, you wouldn't believe how they can't wait to get it done. This will be down the pike as well. Also, I got hit again with a lady from the city. She travels Timoca Farms Road. That has to be restriped. You end up with two lanes, dedicated lanes going east at the light. If you're coming from the south and you want to go east, there are two dedicated lanes going to the east. There's one dedicated lane going north and also west, and it backs up for like maybe four or five blocks. It doesn't need to be. All you need to do is restripe the two lanes so that one lane goes forward and one lane goes west. It'll, believe me or not, unravel all of that mess. And I was told, well, because there's six inches out of alignment, well, there are rows, Orange Avenue is one of which, that are like an entire lane out of, out of alignment. You have to really curve. So if we could look at that, please. The police, I know the the governor's doing that. I'm wondering if we're doing anything. We are short in Daytona Beach. I believe Mike is short in his police officers for the sheriff. So is there, are we doing anything county-wise to entice them to come? There's all this talk about them not taking the coronavirus, retiring early. Well, if we can get our fair share of those policemen that are retiring would be really great. The other morning, I was walking the beach, well, this is like a year ago or so, and I ran into this guy. It was like a little after four o'clock in the morning. So I just assumed that he was homeless. So when I talked to him about where he could go to eat, where he'd get clothing, where he'd get help, he goes, oh, no, no, no. I, now I have a house. I'm married. I have a job. He says, but I've been here. He went to drug rehab four different times. And his complaint was he comes out of drug rehab right onto the street. There's no place for him to go. There's no job, no money, no nothing. So he said, it's so easy to fall right back into stealing from the stores, doing drugs and all of that stuff. It took him four times before he was able to get out of it. Can we look at everything that the county has in drug rehab, et cetera? So when they come out, it's a holistic approach? They've, they've got to the point where they're ready to get clean? Let's help them. All right, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of things. First, I just want to mention off of that VOTRAN, great job that they were doing. Just point out that was at the Ocean Center and it's an example of what we used to call the Bring a Meeting Home program. A lot of our folks in what we do are involved in professional organizations and we encourage them to bring their meetings here. And it's often a big success. Another item I want to bring up, the council met and we talked about the sponsorship and naming rights. We're putting out a RFQ for that. I just wanted to point out some of the highlights because this is going to go out on the street in next week on the 9th of November. We hope to have a pre-proposal conference a few days after that on the 17th. And we'll look at closing that solicitation around the 12th or, excuse me, the 7th of December. What we're looking at, if you remember from the meeting, we had talked about some of the items, but there'll be the potential for multiple awards based on what type of specialty these companies have. We were looking at the term with a three-year term, two one-year options. There'll be some multiple tasks that will include the determining of the value of our assets and then looking at a naming rights sponsorship policy, the actual marketing of the assets afterwards and negotiating these contracts. Some of those may require, of course, county council approval. And we will, the contract for this solicitation will not apply to any current sponsorship or naming rights agreement already in place or in negotiation at the time of the contract. We'll be looking for people that are. We'll be looking for people that are, have a record of success in naming rights and revenues of cities and counties, size equal to Volusia County. And we'll be looking for someone with about a minimum of five years in sponsorship and naming rights placement. And it's intended right now, based on, and this will be based on how many responses that the council will serve as the evaluation committee. But we may ask, depending if there are a lot of respondents, we may ask, come back and ask if you would like us to, staff to look at and delegate to us to get you a short list of maybe three. Save time at that time. I also like to bring up another opportunity that we have. University of Florida's College of Design, Construction and Planning has agreed to lead a fairgrounds master planning process where they would develop a plan for the future that would be in concert with our partners, Fair Association, Catamount Association, Farm Bureau, and of course, our Resource Stewardship Division. The plan would involve, of course, partner and public input. I think we could realize some significant savings working with the University of Florida. We're looking right now at the scope of the project. And of course, that'll be reviewed also with our partners. And I will say, this team did a similar project up in Clay County. And that plan facilitated the county getting two $500,000 grants from the state to fund improvements. And it's just another example, like we've done very successfully with our water quality plan. When you have a plan and you're dedicated to doing these type of projects and improvements, that often is a key to you getting grants from these other agencies. So we're excited about that. And lastly, I'm just going to bring up, we won't meet again until the 16th. But in between, we will have Veterans Day. That is not a holiday here at the county. I think that I would like, if the council would give me permission, we have a couple ways of looking at it. But what I would think would be best, because it's been brought up sporadically, it's been brought up by some of our labor unions, that we look at doing that as part of the next budget year. And if council would allow me to figure what that would cost to meet in the organization and put that in as part of our budget proposal for next year, I would be happy to do that.
Can we get a motion to that effect? To a motion by Lowery, second by Wheeler to give the responsibility, the county manager, to see how much that would cost to putting Veterans Day, adding Veterans Day to our list of county holidays? Correct?
Yes.
Is that what you need? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
All right. And great day. Thank you very much.
Tony, Tony.
Yes, sir. Back recently, when you adopted the amendment to your code, provided for meeting rules, you directed me to return with a presentation, just kind of give an overview of the new ordinance and those rules. We're prepared to do that at the next meeting on the 16th. We did have, did reach out to a couple of groups that we worked with, the CF Summit could join us in that presentation. And actually, I had some difficulty in doing that, actually. UCF's Institute of Government recommended that someone, and we have reached out to them. So we're prepared to come on the 16th unless, you know, it's council's pleasure, unless you wish to have that at a different time. So I just wanted to bring that up for direction.
Mr. County Manager.
I just had something else, but I wanted, after Mike's...
Okay, I thought you wanted to comment on that. Is there a motion or what's the feeling of the council for November 16th to move forward with that? Presentation on the rules that we adopted for meetings. Motion by Robbins to approve that meeting on the 16th, second by Wheeler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
And last thing, I got an email from the Florida Association of Counties. According to them, today is National Love Your Lawyer Day. So nobody has conveyed that to me, but...
You're making that up.
Well, according to Florida Association of Counties. Anyway, thank you.
I don't see any requests for motions on that, so... But we do have all of our lawyers. We're truly blessed with a great legal staff here. I know from my point of view, it's been very helpful. Suzanne, did you have anything? Okay, then we'll go to council members. Mr. Robbins?
Mr. Brower, George has something to say.
Oh, he did, but he took his name off the list. I thought it was answered.
Okay. I just wanted also, of course, we want to thank everyone for the good words today with the retirement of Joe Pozo. We had another division head that retired and did not want any recognition. Sue Bartlett had retired as our mosquito control director. And while her career here wasn't very long, it was very strategic. She came here from Penales County and really helped out when we had a change a few years ago and took on that position. And really has developed a great staff out there, a lot of young folks that have come out of the universities. So I just wanted to point that out. We are right now in the process of interviewing people for that position. And I will probably, for the day's end, put out at least our list of who will be the interim there. And also the same, who will be the interim, I'll put out here shortly to replace Joe while we go through that process. So I do appreciate it and we'll miss everybody. But I will also say, we've got a lot of great people, both in the organization and our organization is attracting some really great candidates when we're looking. So I do appreciate everybody. And I say, Sue very, did not want any type of show, but we were able to, she had a very nice goodbye with her staff and her colleagues at Public Works. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Chair. I just had one thing. I've been getting several calls throughout the last couple of weeks and months reference to just the communication. And I don't know if there's much that we can do with it or where we can improve. But with the influx of land sales, tax deeds and whatnot, folks are purchasing property. They're punching wells, doing septic's, only to find out that their lot isn't really buildable on or the hoops that they're going through is not cost-effective or it's not worth it. And I was just wondering if we can look into this, where we can approve or look at policy to improve the communication, where we can catch some of this for the landowner or the potential homeowner on the front end. So in return, they don't have to tie up staff time, maybe unraveling some of the issues that we run into and also keeping that money in their pocket. Because a well, you're looking at five grand, I just did one. And septic's as well are eight to 10 grand to put that out and then find out that their lot's not buildable or there's just too much red tape and it's not cost-effective. I'd like to hopefully get council support to maybe explore that and look at policy and see what we can come back with. That's all I have.
Why don't you make a motion to send that to staff for evaluation, to bring back information to us of how we can do that? Is that acceptable? Is that reasonable to you?
Sure. I'll make that motion for staff to come back with some information on how we can make the communication or policy better between the two entities. Thanks.
Second motion by Robbins, second by Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And Billy Wheeler? Billy Wheeler's good. Mrs. Gurtman.
Thank you, Chair. This Saturday, I attended an event and Councilwoman Post was there as well. And it was in regards to domestic violence. And it was very moving to hear the stories. But I think what's impacting me even more, I think since COVID, you hear about so many more incidents of domestic violence. And I guess I just want to be assured we're doing what we can in working with the programs to ensure that there are resources available for those who are impacted and to help make a difference in those programs. So Donna, I don't know if it's through community service or if it's through, you know, the sheriff and the legal department. But either way, or mental health, I'm not sure what that avenue is to or what those requests are for resources, housing. I guess it's a multitude of needs. But I just want to be assured that we have, what we can do is in line with responding to those needs. So if somebody can, if the council would allow, staff to respond back on, you know, what do we do? What resources do we participate in and how do we help in those times of need for our residents? I'm really excited to hear about the master plan at the fairgrounds. There's a broad vision for just trying to make that area, that area is central to our county. And I really believe it's important for us to bring it into the future, the current. And hopefully, we'll get some feedback in regards to perhaps that being more of an event center. I think it's become that, but it's really not known and doesn't have that look. So I'm hoping we can get some reinvestment into our fairgrounds and that area and just make it a event complex for Volusia County and something that we'd all be even more proud of to attend. And I think we're lacking certain event venues that perhaps we can actually put in that area at some point. So I'm really looking forward to hearing back what the master plan and suggestions are for improvements in that area. And I think that's it for me.
You didn't have one other motion you wanted to make?
Oh, we've gotten broadband. Thank you. Thank you. I didn't write that down. So I do want to make a motion about workshops, actually, for broadband. I think it was broadband. We already have one for housing. And there was one other. Water. Yeah.
Okay, so you're requesting, your motion is for three separate workshops? One on broadband, one on water? I'm going to suggest we need a separate one on water anyway, and I'll talk about that, too.
And does it need to be a workshop or a presentation from staff? I think it's just a presentation so we can all hear and get an overview of what the needs are, where we are, and just the opportunity there. I think the same thing with the water. I don't know that a workshop would bring you more opportunity, at least now. I think hearing the overview, hearing what dollars are available. And then after that, if we're going to break things down, maybe a workshop later in 2022 if we need to get down to greater detail.
See, one information brought back on broadband, on water. Should we include domestic violence that you talked about at the beginning?
Thank you.
And what was the third one?
That was it. It was domestic violence, broadband and water. Housing, we already have the summit scheduled for December.
That motion by Gurtman to, just to bring back more information from county staff on domestic violence, on broadband, internet and state of water in the county. Is there a second? Second by Wheeler. Ben Johnson.
Yes, when you're talking domestic violence, that's already well in the works. Start with state law tells law enforcement officers what they have to do. It doesn't give many exceptions to it. You know, that if you do have a domestic violence, you almost have to, well, you have to take some action. And you have the Domestic Violence Council out there. I mean, they could take and make a presentation to us to what they're doing. But as for what we do is a little bit on the low end. But your Domestic Violence Council, they do have set up so that in domestic violence, you can take and get the victim out of the realm and into a place. Then you have the State Attorney's Office, which does the prosecution of it, whether it's deferred or, you know, you have different ways to go about it. I would say there's not a lot of action that we take. We could ask that maybe the Sheriff's Department just gives us the overall presentation and let us know what they do. Because they do take, all law enforcement takes a real, real serious approach on domestic violence and basically give us what the steps are and how they do about it, what they go about it. I mean, we could ask that, but...
I'm not looking at it from that perspective. I'm looking at it from the perspective of the support once they are identified.
Well, there is. And that's, I think, maybe as you get from them what the support is because they work with it daily. And their victim advocates with the sheriff's office could tell us what they do daily and kind of clarify. We're kind of stepping in their realm of all of law enforcement. And there is a lot going on with it and a lot they do and a lot they're required to do. And I think probably the best thing to do is let them give us a short presentation of the steps and how they handle it. And then if they have something that we can help them with, they could make that recommendation.
I'm open to that, but I guess probably where I'm at is more like the Beacon Center and, you know, those who are responding to those in need, whether it's a male or female or children. I'm asking, how are we supporting? Or where is the county or partner relationships with getting people, you know, the help that they need?
Well, I think a presentation from them possibly would be the right way to go before we start taking a ball and running with something that we...
Well, I'm not looking to run with a ball. I'm looking to understand what's out there. It's just like John said, when we have those that are returning from situations and they need, they need help. They end up costing us more for us not helping them in a situation to get settled than it is for them to go back and forth into programs and come. So maybe it's more on those lines. How do we help in that scenario? Whether it's, you know, people coming out of the system, out of rehab or, you know, they need help because of domestic violence. I think it's connected in the way of, you know, what resources are in our community. And if we have funds or there are grants, how do we help strengthen that? So I'd like to have a better understanding of what we do, what we can't do and how we can better help, even if it's about identifying others or partnerships that we can have, public-private partnerships to bring resources. I spoke with Rep Brenner recently, and I know that's one of his initiatives, is, you know, reducing recidivism and, you know, perhaps bringing some resources. So just want to get a better handle on that for where we go for next year. Thank you. Thank you.
And as I understand your motion, you're, you're actually handing the ball to the county staff, and they, they may come back and, and speak to that, whether or not the sheriff should do a presentation, or you, and we'll, we'll get the information.
If they think it's best, they, they know kind of who we, who we are behind the scenes, and, and how we help in the ways that we do, and who do, who we connect with. Donna and her staff did a great program recently for that hotel, that there were, what, 56 families that were being displaced, and they brought together more than 10 agencies, you know, and got most of those families, you know, repl, you know, put into a, a home situation, identified the needs, and to the point where we've talked about now, maybe, what is it, quarterly, Donna, going throughout the county, and meeting people where they are with those needs, and partnering with some of those agencies. So, I, I think there's other ways we could be supporting community and bringing what we already have, and partnerships and relationships we already have, and bringing them to where people are, instead of trying to send everybody to an online program. Everybody's not online, or every emergency, you know, that's not always what's in the front of their mind when it's about survival for them. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Ben Johnson?
My take is, I'm going to go with Ben, in that situation, that we need the professionals, they're the ones who should be coming, looking at it, because they're dealing on a daily basis and coming to us if they have issues and ways that we can help them, not the other, not so much the other way around. Let them know we're there to help them, but you're kind of stepping in some other people's bailiwick, when they all work together, and let them, you know, let them come to us and say, hey, we have these ideas, because they are the professionals dealing with it every day.
Okay. With that, we'll call for a vote on the motion, which is, as I understand it, again, to hand off to the county staff to get feedback on how we can move forward on this whole issue of domestic violence, broadband, internet, and water. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries six to zero. Mr. Johnson?
The other day, when we were doing, I was out doing my deal with our county people about trash, one of the things I noticed out around the White Hair Bridge in Edstone Park was the cigarette butts on the ground, and those are receptacles for anybody to put them in. And I thought it might be wise if we just, if nothing else, put some receptacles out there and see if people would use them, and be cheap and easy, but that's probably the hardest thing to pick up, when it comes to trash, and what I saw the most of. So, I, I'd like to see us maybe put some cigarette receptacles out there and see if it works, if it helps, even if it takes half of them off the ground, that's still half of them. That's all I really have right now.
You're, you're absolutely correct. It's the, it's the number one item of trash on the beach, and there is, we'll, we'll pass this off to staff, too. There is a program that the city of New Smyrna Beach is using, where those cigarette butt receptacles are actually funded by private companies, so it doesn't cost the city, perhaps we could do that on the county as well, and they're, they're not, they're not particularly unattractive. I mean, it's still, it's a receptacle on a, on a pole with good signage, and so we might want to check with the city in New Smyrna Beach, how they came about that. I don't think we need a motion for that. I see them all writing down vigorously over there. Mr. Lowery?
Yeah, just want to say thank you to Mr. Dyer, Ms. Slack, and the legal department for trying to help us resolve the Osteen enterprise conundrum, and appreciate the extra mile that, that they're wanting to go to try to help us out there. Thank you. That's all I have.
And I just have a, one item to add to what we just accomplished with Councilwoman Gertman. I, I don't, I don't think we need another motion for it, but that as you come back with information on the domestic violence, broadband, and water, I would like to, to have your input on the possibility of having a workshop just on water next year, maybe January, because we, we do have a comprehensive water plan, and I would like for the public to know about it, and see how the council might want to strengthen that and prove it, or, or change it in any way, to include wetlands. We just voted on something this morning, we all approved it, including me, with the property of Pearson, who had damaged a wetland. I'm familiar with that area. They didn't know it was there, and frankly, that, that happens quite a bit, it's, it's sometimes it's hard to tell, so, you know, why do we have wetlands? Where are they? And why do we protect them? And then lastly, to include low-impact development. Right now, we strongly recommend it. I, I think it might be a, a time to move that forward, and in, in assessing that, at the conference that four of the county council members were able to go to on low-income development, probably some of the best speakers I've ever heard on that, just, it was a very worthwhile two-day conference. A lot of the speakers were from University of Florida, Florida Atlantic, and from private companies. One of the professors from U, University of Florida, Dr. Pierce, spoke on not only how helpful lid is low-income development, but that it's truly an advantage to developers, that it's, that it's actually affordable, more affordable than some common development practices, and more profitable. And he and several of the other speakers have really good suggestions on how do we reach out to developers to not make them feel like we're kicking them down the road, or, but, but that kind of information could be presented to them, how it, how it could be affordable and profitable. So, and Dr. Pierce has said he would, he would be glad to come to a workshop that we had and give that input, and he won't take it over, but give some, some brief input, and I have his contact information. So, I'm just asking you to add that to the pot that we handed you this morning. And that's all for me. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Wheeler, second by Gertman. All in favor, say aye. And we are adjourned at Record 112.